All right, well, welcome everyone. We'll call our meeting to order. This is the Freeport Town Council meeting number 05-24. Today is Tuesday, March 19th, and it's just a couple of minutes after 6 o'clock. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, welcome. And there's materials on the back table if anybody wants to follow along. The printed agenda was also, I'm sorry, the evening's agenda was also on our website if you were following along online. Let's find out who's here for the meeting this evening. Counsel of Pillsbury.
Present.
Counsel Lawrence.
Here.
Counsel Brnoy.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
Counsel Pilsch.
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Counsel of Darreford is excused and is traveling for the next little bit. Our first order is to waive the reading of the minutes of number, meeting number 05-24. So I actually misspoke. Today's meeting is 06-24. Do we have a motion to accept the minutes and move them as presented? Or do we have any reason to talk about them?
So moved.
So moved. Been, moved and seconded. See any other hands? All those in favor?
Aye.
Six to zero. Minutes are adopted. Thank you. Chris. Our next item is announcements. I have a few, and then we'll go down the line, see if anybody else has any. The 2024 Maine State Park passes have arrived and are ready for circulation at the library. We have three passes available, once again, thanks to Freeport Conservation Trust. Another example of our library of things going on at our great community library, not just books. After more than a year of data analysis and community engagement, the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board is collecting input to refine a draft of the town's first climate action plan. Printed materials can be found here at Town Hall and at the library, and you can also view the draft plan online on our website. The plan strives to tell the story of why taking action on climate change matters for Freeport and recommend high-impact actions that the municipality can take in the next few years to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and help prepare our community for a safe, healthy, and resilient future. There are in-person and online ways to give input to that climate action plan. The Town of Freeport Planning Board is beginning the process of updating our comprehensive plan. This is an extremely valuable document for the direction of the town over the next several years. We expect this to be about an 18-month process. Although the planning board is early in the stage of the process now, there will soon be materials that we'll be looking for public feedback on. In the meantime, please check out the new project website, www.futurefreeport.com, and you can sign up to get on an email list. Again, the comprehensive plan is the single document that the town puts forward with resident input, with staff input, with professional input guided by a consultant that we've hired to really chart out where the town is going with lots of different things. So I encourage people to get engaged. Sounds boring, but it's actually really interesting. Posted roads will end on Thursday, March 21st, later this week. Tax season is here, and the library can help. Several tax forms are available at the front desk of the library, and the staff are happy to help you locate any additional forms. They won't do your taxes, but they can show you where the forms are. Please stop by or visit freportlibrary.com. Any other announcements from other councilors? Okay, our next item on the agenda is information exchange. This is a chance for us to talk about committees or feedback from the public or any other interesting items coming up, events, things like that. Any information exchange? Counselor Smith.
The Municipal Facilities Committee met last Thursday. The committee voted to confirm staff recommendations regarding tax-acquired properties. Staff will now follow appropriate procedures in line with our updated tax-acquired property policy, and any required action for the council will come to the council in a future meeting. The committee also voted to pause the proposed upgrades to the front of Town Hall due to concerns over project budget and staff changes. We will revisit that at the committee in the coming months, and then we'll provide you with an update. We also discussed plans for a working group to review needs at the Public Safety Building, and we will have updates on that soon. Also related to Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board, this falls in line with the announcement that you just made, but FSAB held a very successful Maine trivia night last night at Maine Beer Company, particularly successful because my team won. But I want to state publicly that I did not have access to the questions in advance. But I did learn quite a few things, so that was great. So I want to thank FSAB for hosting that, as well as to Maine Beer Company for hosting that. All of that was to raise awareness about the Climate Action Plan, which, as John just said, is available online. The council will be receiving that at a workshop in May. But in the meantime, there is still a lot of opportunity to either come and view that here at Town Hall, or at the library, or online at freportclimateaction.org.
Great, thank you. Counsel Pillsbury.
Can I ask a question about the improvements up front? Is that part of the grant that we got from T-Mobile? And are there any implications to pausing the work?
We did ask that question. I'm going to pivot back to the manager, but the manager was going to investigate exactly that question.
So, the manager is still investigating that question? It does not appear so at this point, but I want to dig just a little bit deeper. I think part of our concern is that the value engineering that we would need to do to bring this in under budget or at budget, we'll need to go back to design review anyway. So, thought we would pause, let that process happen. We might also want to look at the design there a little bit, because there's, I think, some of it is going to be difficult to maintain. So, we are kind of working our way through that, but we're not going to let the $50,000 pass us by.
Counsel Brnoy.
So, the fit-up committee has made two more awards to businesses. Those are to Gingham, which is a clothing store that is moving from Yarmouth to Freeport to 25 Poe Street. Also, we gave an award to Love Point Boasters, which has embarked on a pretty large project by the Y, so down on Route 1. The committee did have a discussion about sort of that area of Route 1, if it sort of fell under the intention of the program, as the intention of the program is to support the downtown vision plan. However, we did see that the zone that that business is in, which is C1, is in the sort of allowable zones, and we think that it fits the purpose and the spirit of the grant program pretty perfectly, honestly. So we're excited about that. And so that brings us up to $57,275 that have been awarded of the $60,000. So we have under $3,000 left to award, and a couple more applications that have been submitted. So, we will realize that full amount shortly.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Any other announcements or updates? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to Town Manager's Report. Sophie.
So I actually have a few things to talk about tonight. First, I just want to recognize a couple of staff folks. The first would be Jessica Malloy, our Finance Director, and Becky Haslip, our Finance Clerk. They both received certification as Maine Certified Tax Collectors and Treasurers, which is pretty cool and very good for Freeport. We also had a group of Freeport's finest police officers participate in the ice-out plunge at Marana Cook Lake. Officers Norris, Marshall, Detective Rice, and Officer O'Toole raised about $1,800, contributing to $50,000 raised for Special Olympics. There is a picture of them as they are preparing to jump into the icy cold water on the Facebook page. I have it here. I'll send it out to councilors. It's kind of humorous. The Bartow Building RFP is out, and I would just bring, Counselor, attention to the fact that we have established two walk-through opportunities for people, and it's really important that we stick with those two. And if we need to add a third, we would have a discussion, but we want everybody to have the same opportunity with that. We've talked about our engineer has, is going to be leaving us to move into the private sector. We would like to, I plan, unless I hear otherwise, to issue Engineering General Services RFQ to see what that looks like for Freeport. We also, from a staff perspective, we have a staff member who's a veteran that is actually quite engaged in bringing the traveling Vietnam War Veterans Memorial to Bitterford this summer. That will be here from July 8th, 2024, to July 21st, 2024, unless I hear objection from the council. Staff would like to, on the 29th and leading up to that, just recognize the historical facts of kind of the day and what's happening to March 29th as a special day for people, and we'd like to recognize that.
Great.
The last one is needing some guidance from council. Earlier today, I learned that as part of our shoreline, I'm sorry, our floodplain management ordinance review, revision that we have to do because FEMA adopted the flood map, adopted new flood maps, that also comes with other guidance, not just the map itself. And part of that guidance is that any shoreline stabilization and any warfs within the velocity zone would have to be engineered. And our code officer is concerned because right now, it would be the exception for folks to have those engineered. So we will be adding quite a burden to people who want to stabilize the shoreline or add warfs in that velocity zone, which he says is primarily, well, actually, he said if you're looking towards England, you're in the velocity zone. So, he called to get some guidance as to whether that was mandatory or there was any wiggle room on that. It is not a FEMA requirement. It is a DEP requirement, a Maine DEP requirement. He does not feel comfortable pushing any more than he already has. They asked him why, what they said was unreasonable, and he gave them answers, but they're really not moving. So one option would be if the council wanted to try to push a little bit to do that from the Town Council as opposed to from the code office that will be charged with enforcing this ordinance.
Any possibility the DEP representative could come here to a meeting and explain to us?
Would you like me to try to get him here?
That'd be great.
Awesome.
I agree that putting our code officer up against state government does the...
Yeah, that's really not quite fair. And beyond that, I think I'm done, but it's an actual report, so I'm making progress.
Thanks very much, Sophie. Look forward to opportunities to visit the Vietnam War Memorial when it's traveling here this summer. Our next order of business is public comment. This is a chance for anybody here present in Town Hall to address the council. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Please introduce yourself when you step up to the microphone. Share what's on your mind. Also, keep in mind, this is a public comment and is generally not a sort of a back-and-forth or a debate on any particular issues, but we'd like to hear what's on your mind, and so please feel free to step up to the microphone if you wish to address the council. What button do you push for the three?
My name is Bill Wixson, Hunt Varney Road. And over the last several months, I've come here to just keep you up to date on Third Act Maine, a group of elders working for a better climate future, and myself, and our interactions with LL Bean. And so I just wanted to come tonight and give you sort of an update of where things are. Winters are changing. Early March saw local ponds here in Freeport free of ice more than a month before normal. February saw nearly no snowfall. January saw epic wind and rainstorms, not snowstorms. What can an individual do to combat climate change? My choice is to raise awareness about the money that is still being invested in new fossil fuel projects, at the biggest banks that fund those projects, as well as at the companies that use those banks. Back in September, I began protesting outside the LL Bean retail store and their corporate offices here in Freeport. Soon, I was joined by others from Third Act Maine, a group of elders working for a better climate future. We were asking LL Bean to sever ties with Citibank, who services their credit card, or at least promise to talk to Citi about the need to stop funding new fossil fuel projects. And in either case, we simply asked for a public statement about the actions they had taken on this important matter. In October, the LL Bean CEO, Stephen Smith, came out to talk with me as I stood in protest in front of the LL Bean corporate office. He said, in essence, that we, he would not be honoring our requests. As he left, he said, "You know, we are really on the same side," as he looked up at my large banner that says, "Protect Mother Earth." Each weekday morning that I have stood out there, a carpool load of children on their way to school passes me by. As the children go by, they wave and give me enthusiastic smiles and hold out signs written in crayon that say, "Protect Mother Earth." With LL Bean's connection with Citibank, a major funder of new fossil fuel infrastructure, would this CEO say that he is also on the same side as these children and their future? Here we are, six months since September, after experiencing a warm autumn and an unusually mild winter, and hearing nothing from LL Bean except for that brief visit from the CEO out on the street. We at Third Act Maine continue to make the same requests of LL Bean as we had made back in September, sever your ties with Citibank, a major funder of new fossil fuel infrastructure.
Are you almost wrapping up, Bill?
I can.
Thanks.
Few more seconds, thank you. LL Bean could still do the right thing. They could still be on the right side for the children of Freeport and of the world. But time is running out for us to make the changes we need for our planet to remain habitable for people and the plants and animals for whom this earth is home. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Suzanne Watson, 21 Carriage Road. I just, I've noticed on the agenda tonight that the Town Manager's Report was going to include a vet's remembrance, and I had approached the council some time back and suggested August 25th, when we have the U.S. Navy Band in Memorial Park, might be a good day to print out, you know, recognize vets in general. And this may now be redundant, but I just sort of put it back on the table and say, it would be great if we could talk about how that might be done or not done. I mean, I'm fine with that, but I just thought I'd put it out there again. Thanks.
Thank you, Suzanne. I think there's still quite a bit of interest in that, so explore that. Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, neighbors, councilors. My name is Daniel Freund. I live at 38 Chee Hawk Road in Freeport. For at least 14 years, Freeport and every other community and school system, using either the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust or the Maine Educators Association Benefit Trust, have paid between 20% and 30% more than necessary for identical services with identical providers, 20% and 30% for 14 or more years. Countless ineligible people have participated in the plan at significant costs to all the beneficiaries of the trust, not to mention the taxpayers that pay for it. Health insurance is a perennial budget concern for the town and RSU 5. The town has the means to reduce the cost, enhance compliance, reduce HR labor, and improve employee appreciation of their benefits. Freeport's engagement will also help the other 90,000 policemen and women, teachers, firefighters, maintenance, and administrative workers throughout Maine. I'm available to discuss this with the Town Manager and/or any counselor, some of whom have privately told me that this is a worthy initiative. My request tonight is that the council consider making this an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
I am doing some research, too, so I haven't gotten any information back yet, but I am sure it's going to be there, so.
Other members of the public who wish to speak? Tell us what's on your minds. It's an open floor. It's an open microphone. Microphone looks like it's pointing in the wrong direction, but it's actually right where it's supposed to be, according to our tech guy, Tom. That's really not fair. Tom's got a much better title than that.
No, I think he likes tech, Tom.
Sorry, Tom. All right, so I don't see any further interest in public comment, so we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. We're entering the part of this evening's agenda where we take action and votes. Again, the agenda's on the table in the back if you'd like to follow along. Our first action item is to adopt the Consent Agenda. This is a list of things that are rather routine and ordinary. They've been presented. The council's had a chance to read over it. To consider action relative, this is item number 76-24, to consider action relative to adopting the March 19th Consent Agenda. Be it ordered that the March 19th, 2024 Consent Agenda be adopted. Second. You have a second. There's a number of things on there. It's mostly just accepting good deeds and some financial contributions to the town and its affiliates. Is there anything on there that anyone wishes to have removed for further conversation, which we can take off the Consent Agenda? Okay, not seeing anything. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adopting the Consent Agenda?
Aye.
Chris? Thank you. Our next item is item number 77-24. This is going to be a public hearing. And, so let's see, Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the, be it ordained, so that we can open the public hearing with the proper title?
Absolutely. Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 48, Parking and Traffic Ordinance, Sections 48-308, South Freeport and Town Wharf, to allow one Harbor Master parking spot to be located at the discretion of the police chief, be approved.
Second. All right, so this item's been moved and seconded. It is a public hearing. We're here, the public hearing is a chance for anyone who's got concern over this issue, neighbors, butters, users, to be able to talk freely about this particular item. Anyone wishing to speak during public hearing? All right, not seeing any hands raised. I don't see any online either. We will close the public hearing and hear from the chief, I think, who's going to briefly explain the importance of this one parking spot. Chief Nate.
Hello, council. I can give you a brief overview of kind of how this came to be on the agenda. In a nutshell, currently, down at the Town Wharf, adjacent to the Harbor Master building, we have one parking spot that's utilized by the Harbor Master Marine Patrol Officer when they're on duty. What we've found over the years is that that particular spot is kind of always in the way. So when they're trying to come and go, or if we have a harvester trying to unload a catch from the flats or from a lobster boat, utilizing the town hoist, or whether it be someone trying to find a parking spot to walk, access the boat landing, go to the restaurant or whatever, we found that that parking spot is kind of, it's kind of a prime spot, and it's kind of in the way. So, recently, the Harbor Master, Charlie Tetra, approached us and said, hey, I've talked to everyone at the town, everyone who had an interest in this down at the Town Wharf, and we're all kind of in agreement, if we could move the parking spot to the opposite end of the parking lot, kind of away from the main busy corridor, it would probably benefit everyone. It would allow the Marine Patrol and Harbor Master officers working that day to come and go with a little interaction with the parking and walking public as possible. It allows the harvesters to load and offload rigging, and people using the Lily Bee service, it allows them to come and go. It provides, we provide a valuable spot for people to utilize. So there's really, as far as we can see, we haven't, we don't see any negative, any negative aspect from moving the parking lot, parking spot from one end of the lot to the other. All the butters seem to agree that we've talked to. So, that's, it's in a nutshell, kind of why this is on the agenda tonight.
Great. We had a discussion about this two weeks ago when we set the public hearing, so we had a little bit of briefing then. Any questions for the chief? Eric?
And this probably is not best addressed to you, but since you're presenting it, I guess my only concern, I'm fully in favor of moving the Harbor Master spot away from that high-needs zone, particularly by the hoist. My only concern is what happens to that space? Will that become a loading zone, so that it doesn't become somewhere where someone else has just parked all day, and therefore continuing to block that space? Has that conversation also been a part of this?
Well, we, presently, in that area, there are no, I believe the only limitations to utilizing those parking spots is after-hours or overnight parking. I believe it's a prohibition on overnight parking, but I don't believe there is a, of course, I may be wrong here, I don't believe there's a cap such as like an hour or two-hour parking zone for those individual spots. That's not to say that, you know, Complete Streets, I guess, could look at that. Perhaps if that's, you know, the will of the council is to turn that into a timed parking spot. I don't see why that conversation couldn't occur. To my knowledge, we haven't really talked about that.
I guess, yeah, just that one parking spot that is currently the Harbor Master spot, if we're opening that up for use particularly of commercial fishermen or other people that are trying to get access to the dock, I wouldn't want us to just be shifting the problem to have that be just a regular parking space that is then also could, somebody could park there all day and go out on their boat and continue to block the access to the hoist. So, that would be my recommendation, and that can come back to Complete Streets, and we can look at that, if that would be the best place to talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, that brings up a good point, the, you know, who's utilizing the space and for how long. Presently, I think the harvesters utilize the middle section. I think they back right onto the dock. I just know that from making my rounds throughout the week, it seems to be utilized by harvesters a lot, the space. If we're not parked there doing something constructive, the harvesters are in the spot, usually tending to something. So, I guess it's kind of always been an unwritten rule down at the water that, you know, the spot is kind of utilized by probably harvesters more than anyone else throughout the day.
I think this is more so that the Harbor Masters isn't blocked while they're unloading and loading.
Yeah.
Instead of having access to the...
I see.
Because they can have access, how long are they loading and unloading, half an hour, 45 minutes or whatever, and then...
Yeah, I believe they back right...
Yeah, they back right down the center, right in the middle, so that they can, yeah, so it's more moving it so that Charlie can get out quicker instead of, I gotta, right, I need to leave now, I can't leave in half an hour.
It's, parking, as you all know, it's really bad down there. It's probably a good spot to have alternative parking, but we have what we have right now.
Other questions for the chief? Thanks very much, chief. Any other questions about this item? All right, so we've had a public hearing, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of making the amendments, Chapter 48?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero, Chris. All right, our next item is number 78-24. This is another public hearing, to consider action on a TIF request for Wildwood Acres, presented by Freeport Housing Trust. And we have some members of the public here to make a presentation, but let's first open the item. Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the "Be it ordered"?
Sure. Be it ordered that an affordable housing TIF and credit enhancement agreement for Wildwood Acres be approved.
Second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. We're opening the public hearing. Anyone wish to comment or make, approach the podium to talk to about this particular issue to the council? All right, I don't see any standing up. I don't see any hands online. Go ahead.
Hello, my name's Chris O'Neil. I'm a resident here in town, live on Pine Street. An year since 1989, I was a member of the Housing Trust Board many years ago. I'm currently on the Freeport Community Services Board and have been active as a volunteer with Freeport Community Services for many years. I am very much in favor of this TIF, the work that Freeport Housing Trust has done to preserve existing affordable units, I think is essential. It is a value of our town, a long-established value. And the cost to replace this type of unit is, is significant. It would be an absolute barrier for us to be able to, to actually replace, I think this is 36 units. We had a similar opportunity recently at Quarry Ridge where the Housing Trust did similar type of work. And in order, they were able to make significant and critical capital improvements to some tired units that needed the capital improvements. So I am very much in favor and support this TIF, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak during the public hearing? All right, we're going to get a presentation. Brett's going to tee it up. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll listen to the applicant's presentation. Go ahead, Brett.
Thanks, everybody. Brett Richardson, Executive Director of the Freeport Economic Development Corporation. I'm here to share FEDC's finding on this project, and joined by Matt Peters, Executive Director of Freeport Housing Trust. So we're going to quickly walk through the overview of the project, do an introduction, the review process to date, the due diligence that we've performed, and then our recommendations before we turn it over to Matt. So, quick overview, tax increment financing. It's a flexible finance tool that towns throughout the state use. It's enabled by state statute, enables the town to support projects in line with community goals. By doing so, they shelter new tax revenues from projects and then are able to divert those resources into projects that fulfill the community goals. And Freeport's used TIF over the years for affordable housing, that we'll talk about later, public infrastructure amenities, and to support economic development in town through business expansion. Wildwood Apartments, 36-unit complex downtown, right behind the old Key Bank building. It was built in 1979 with rural development funding with affordability covenants put in place. So those units will be rented affordably, which expire next month. So this is a time-sensitive project. The current assessed value for this project, or for this parcel, is about $2.5 million. And that $2.5 million generates about $34,000 a year in taxes currently. So the Wildwood Apartments reinvestment and rehab that the Freeport Housing Trust is looking to undertake, they'll acquire the parcel and the facilities, they'll invest about $50,000 per unit, and that will create and increment a new value of 1.2 million. And that new value will generate about $16,500 new tax dollars a year, in addition to the current $34,000 that the Freeport Housing Trust pays to the town. The benefits are improved ventilation, accessibility upgrades, and then the Freeport Housing Trust will also put in place new affordability covenants that will make those units accessible for 45 years into the future. So an important resource, resource for the town, right downtown, walking distance to all the employers and amenities. The request is to establish an Affordable Housing Trust TIF district through Main Housing. The request is for the town to shelter 100% of the new value, not the total value, just the new value, and to do that and return that new tax value to the trust for 30 years. And that's going to help stabilize rents, it's going to help Matt finance the project, and it's going to help cover operating costs so that our residents can, can stay in that The projections, just to recap, you know, the current value is 2.5 million, generates about $34,000 a year in taxes. The trust will continue to pay that same level to the town. This isn't talking about the current value, this is about the new investment that the trust is going to make, 1.2 million, 16,500 a year in new value through this investment. And FEDC is charged with the town TIF policy of analyzing applications and requests and then making a recommendation to the town council about the appropriate news, appropriate use of TIF and whether or not the project is consistent with the town TIF policy. We talked about this a couple of times at the board level, beginning in October, again in January, and then in February, the board voted to recommend this project to the council. It's an appropriate use of TIF based on the policy. It's based on a successful partnership over the years with the Freeport Housing Trust, Quarry Ridge most recently, Oakleaf back in 2012, great projects right downtown or close to downtown for Freeport's residents. And most importantly, it advances community goals. Affordable housing's been a community goal for a long time in Freeport. The downtown vision reiterated the need for a mix of housing, and it's critical workforce housing, walkable to the town's economic center, or economic center. So FEDC's recommendation is to encourage the town and the council to approve this district. And in addition, we've run this, the application, there's an extensive application in the packet, that's been reviewed and vetted by Main Housing, so we're pretty confident that once the town takes action, that will be well received by the state. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he can add some color and take any questions.
Thanks, Brett.
Hi, my name's Matt Peters. I'm the Executive Director of the Freeport Housing Trust. The trust operates affordable housing for Freeport residents and others in town. We own 183 apartments scattered about. And really, our goal is to provide affordable housing for all, and in doing so, that creates a much more inclusive environment. It meets several of the town's comprehensive goals that John mentioned earlier, that the town's kicking off the new comprehensive plan. We really look to provide high-quality housing as well. And so as, as Brett mentioned, when we acquired Quarry Ridge, we did do some upgrades, we'll be doing upgrades at Wildwood as well, and maintaining a strong diversity of households right in the, in the downtown core. I'm sure you've seen lots of different downtowns become gentrified over the years, and, and being able to provide stable housing for, for everybody within and benefit from that continued investment is a priority for, for the trust and I think for the town as well. Meeting current accessibility guidelines, so that's just making sure that people can get around and we're, we are inclusive and who we can rent to. And then over the long term, really providing stable housing for, for people. And so in order to provide long-term affordability, the trust, when it started back in the early 80s, was founded upon being a long-term owner. And so being a long-term responsible owner that was operating for the benefit of the community and for the residents, and that, and that long-term vision really allows us to make deep investments and then continue to operate the property affordably. For this particular property, and over the years, we've used really important partnerships. USDA is the primary financer of Wildwood, Main Housing, Bath Savings, and the Federal Home Loan Mega Boston have already put in a million-dollar grant in loans. And EverNorth is our local nonprofit partner that brings in tax credits, and hopefully the town will join all of them in supporting this development. So Wildwood Apartments, the map's a little washed out, but it's very close to downtown. You can see it's right behind Key Bank, across the street from the Tuscan Bistro, and, and so it's a highly walkable location. These are just some pictures of the outside. Actually, the siding looks pretty good, so we don't need to replace that. So more specifically about Wildwood, it's, it is interesting in that it is a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and the homes are not age-restricted, so anybody of any age can move in. Most of them have rental assistance, which is absolutely important because it really provides stability as people's jobs change or life circumstances change, their rent changes with them. And so they, they don't have to go find a new place if they can no longer afford the We are going to be updating two apartments. We did this at Quarry Ridge, and, and there was a gentleman who required accessible apartment, who lived in one that was kind of pretty good, and he was raving about it after the fact, and that was, that was nice to see. And I think we have a similar situation at this property as well. And then in about two-thirds of the apartments, we'll be updating kitchens and bathrooms, which are pretty important and critical pieces, and we'll be replacing all the windows. And lastly, Brett mentioned, we'll be renewing all the use restrictions and putting in place covenants that will ensure affordability over time, as well as the trust owning it, which is our goal. So the nitty-gritty, Brett actually hit the numbers really, really well, so I don't really need to go over this. But what, what it does, what the Affordable Housing TIF does allow us to do in this acquisition is borrow more money so that we can actually do the work that we need to do, instead of scrimping and getting by with, you know, paint and paper. We really want to be able to replace bathroom fans so that the ventilation is good and all those kinds of really important things. And then over time, the way that we're proposing the TIF structure, it will really help us stabilize the operating costs and reduce unexpected property tax increases. That's it. Any questions?
Thanks, Matt. Questions for Matt from the Housing Trust or for Brett on the FEDC process? Dan?
I've got a comment, a question. Comment is for FEDC, for Brett and your board. I was at the several meetings where it came up, and I was happy to see that it, it's not just a rubber stamp from FEDC, it's not, oh, here's a TIF, let's stamp it and move it to the council. There was some pretty healthy discussion, some pretty thoughtful questions, and there was a point or two where I wasn't sure whether it was going to go through, which I think is great. I think it's healthy debate, and I appreciate the effort that your board put into reviewing the application, so thank you for that, and please pass that along to the board. And then the question is, it's more about the mechanics of it, and I'm going to vote for it, I think this is such an important thing to do on so many levels, I think the benefits go to the renters, they go to the Housing Trust, there's so many good things that come from it. My question about the mechanics is that, right now, it's $2.5 million of assessed value. You're going to do improvements that add 1.2 million to that value, but you're only going to pay tax on the 2.5 of current assessed value, right? Am I that right so far?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, so technically, we'll pay the tax on the full value, and then we'll get a rebate back each year for, yeah, the difference.
So my question is, as we look at the later years, 30 years from now, when the property's not worth 2.5 plus 1.2 million, but it's worth multiples of that, everything above the 2.5 million is going to be refunded? So if it's worth $20 million, you'd still be paying tax on, the net tax you'd pay would be on 2.5 million?
Yeah.
Got it. So it's...
I might, I might just add that future values, because it's commercial real estate, will look at the income potential almost exclusively to determine that value, and the income potential is kept by the use restrictions and the rent that can be charged to the affordability targets of the residents that are there. So while values could increase, they're nowhere near going to be on the curve of private property.
That's a really good point.
That would be seen. So in my day job, I see this all the time, I get to see a lot of appraisals on restrictive use properties, and they're significantly diminished from market rate properties because of that income restriction.
Yeah. Either, thank you for the clarification, that's, that's a really good point. Either way, I think it's a great idea, and if there's more money going back to the Housing Trust at the end of the day, that's not a bad thing. So like I said, I'm fully in support of it. Thanks.
Matt?
What happens if there's significant cost overruns in the renovation? How do you account for that? What's the impact?
Yeah, that's a great question. So in our development budget, we do carry a 5% construction contingency, so just in case, actually, sorry, it's 10% because it's a rehab. So we do have a contingency in case there are cost overruns, because they definitely happen in unforeseen conditions. When we're replacing the window and we find that there's extra rot, then we need to expand that removal process and actually fix what needs to be fixed.
Would, would that ever result in a situation where you wanted an adjustment to the TIF or you wanted, you couldn't fulfill the full project plan? I mean, what, I'm just thinking like worst-case scenario.
Yes, worst-case scenario, we would not come back and ask for an expanded TIF. Actually, this is the largest amount that the town can participate through the Affordable Housing TIF program. The trust has resources, we do keep an investment account that we do save for rainy day events. And, and there is also a slight developer fee in the development budget as well. So there are several kind of layers of contingencies, and, and our financial health at the trust that our, our bank partners and investors do look at that because they, they also do think about worst-case scenarios, just like we do.
Other questions?
Out of curiosity, you mentioned the restrictive use being re-upped around this TIF. Is that sort of like the TIF is tied to that re-up or vice versa? Or is that re-up of the affordable housing restrictions happening regardless of the TIF?
So the, the TIF is a key piece to the financing puzzle, and so without the TIF, whether or not I, we can get all of the rest of the financing puzzle together is in question. And so I would say that everything is together because we're all kind of, right now, we're getting all of the pieces of the puzzle together, and then when we ultimately purchase the property, that's when the financing restrictions will go in place. And if we can't get all the pieces together, then that moment doesn't happen.
I might just add that the flip side of this, which is why it's really fortunate that we have Freeport Housing Trust here in town, is that once that loan matures from USDA, the owner of that property today has options... USDA, the owner of that property today has options that don't include keeping it as affordable housing. Once that loan matures, the USDA rent restrictions and the rental assistance that are in place today go away. And that is considerable risk. Because of the location and its walkability and its downtown Freeport, there could be considerable demand for those units from the market. So, to protect the affordability is why the trust is getting involved here. Preservation of affordability, which I think was explained, but I just want to make sure that point gets across, that there is a dramatic risk here, that if the Housing Trust doesn't move forward, those units may or may not be continued on as affordable housing.
That kind of put us at cross purposes here. I mean, it's affordable housing, but it's in a very desirable location, so I would expect that the taxes would go up. And I'm not against affordable housing, but the taxes are going to put people in there that can walk around downtown and actually maybe afford something down here, right? I mean, it's, I get what we're saying and what we're trying to do here, but this is, what we're trying to do is build up the downtown with people that, you know, can walk around downtown, afford things, and go into, you know, the Tuscan Bistro or any of the shops downtown. So, I'm very conflicted because of that.
If I could just clarify one thing. When you talk about letting this shift to the market and assuming the taxes, understand that 70 cents on every dollar that we would collect on those taxes goes outside of the town council's purview. And, you know, I'm not an expert in Freeport yet, but I think lots of different people use affordable housing. And I think that we're looking for vibrancy, we're looking at workforce development, we're looking for people who could live in Freeport and walk to their jobs and support our businesses and our local economy. So, you know, I think it's bigger than just that.
I get it. But this, now, we have 200, we'll have 216 apartments in downtown that are all affordable Whereas if, but this helps people in that end, but where's the middle? You know, the people that want to buy a house, but we don't have houses that those kind of people can afford, but we're, we have houses that people that are not in that bracket can get to, but the people that we kind of want here can't afford to live here. Because they don't meet the bottom criteria, but they're not, they haven't made enough money to be able to afford here, you know? And we need that middle section. I guess this is the big issue I have, is we have low income or affordable housing, we have very wealthy. This, the same thing I've told, said almost every time we've had one of these, is where's the middle? Where's the people that make it a vibrant town, you know, that want to participate, that can participate because they might have a little extra time? That's my concern here, is that we're still not, we're hitting the low end of the market, we're hitting the up end of the market. There's no middle. My kids can't live here because they can't afford to live here, but they don't make, they make enough money that they can't afford to live in affordable housing.
If I could offer just two quick points. The first is to underscore the workforce component. That was a question that FEDC's board brought up as well. And if you talk to employers in town, almost universally, the first barrier and issue that they raise is workforce, and a pinch point. And so, trying to strike a balance. And the second point is, there is some Housing Trust, or Housing Task Force recommendations later tonight that will be talked about. And real big goal of that is that missing middle. So, people are working on that in town, too.
Can I also say that for this development specifically, the income limit will be, for some of the households, for a single-person household, be about $50,000 a year, and then for a larger household, it'll be about $80,000. Just so we, and it is nice to put actual numbers into our heads sometimes.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions? All right. I think we're ready to vote. We've had our public hearing, good conversation. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the Affordable Housing TIF and Credit Enhancement Agreement as proposed for Wildwood Acres?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero? Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Brett. Thanks, Matt. Great presentation. Our next item is number 79-24, and this is to set a public hearing for our next council meeting on April 2nd, relative to the establishment of a temporary food truck zone. Councilor Benoit, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 2nd, 2024, at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM, Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss proposed amendments to Section 501, Temporary Activity in Section 526.8, food trucks of the Freeport zoning ordinance to increase the number of food trucks allowed as a necessary use, to up to six food trucks for a maximum period of six months contingent on securing a temporary activity permit.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. We had a little bit of discussion about this last meeting when we set this public hearing, I'm sorry, when we got ready for this, setting this public hearing, and the planning board has already heard this issue. And so, we've been talking about it for a while, largely prompted by a local entrepreneur. Sophie, you have a little bit of context for what we're going to hear about in two weeks when we have the public hearing?
Yeah. In two weeks, you're going to hear that currently, food trucks are allowed, but not like a food truck court. We have an entrepreneur that really wants to try that out. Staff worked really hard to try to figure out how to make this fit within temporary activity without having to go through a zone change. But the ordinance just simply did not allow that. So, we're bringing it back to allow up to six food trucks for up to six continuous months. Any more than six months triggers a status of other than temporary from the Fire Marshal's Office, and a lot of regulations kick in that the town has no control over, which is why we kept it at six months. The idea is to see how this works and perhaps expand it or change it in the, after the season. We'll come back with an update.
Okay, thank you. So, we're just setting the public hearing for two weeks. Any other questions for the manager? All those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, six to zero. Our next item is number 80-24, to consider setting a second public hearing on April 2nd, to discuss a property tax assistance program designed to help seniors on fixed incomes stay current with their property tax valuations. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for April 2nd, 2024, at the town council meeting starting at 6:00 PM, Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss proposed adoption of a property tax assistance program, new Chapter 67 of the Freeport ordinances and codes, and to provide limited property tax and rental rebates for seniors living in Freeport.
Great. Counselor Lawrence? Thank you for the second. You have some context here.
Yep. So, this was brought, I guess, forward to the ordinance via Counselor Fournier, to assist our seasoned residents in town with property taxes. And it basically sets what the benefit base is, you have to be homestead, what the income level is. And then, we also set what the maximum benefit is that you can have, and there's three different levels. And you can read all that in this, in the criteria for this. I think it's going to be a great program. We looked at a bunch of different things. We changed a few things, and I think we were pretty conservative on this first go-around because we don't know what we're going to get for need. We took a best guess, but...
So, I know we're going to hear a lot about this on the 2nd when we take a vote on it, but just a couple of highlights about what the program is, so people can tune in and decide if it's applicable?
Okay. It's a rebate for people that are at retirement age, as stated by the federal guidelines for retirement. You can, based on your income and your assets, you can get a certain benefit, up to 250% of what the housing poverty level is. That would be the lowest benefit you get as you get less and less on the housing or the, the...
Federal poverty.
Yeah.
Federal poverty.
Yeah, federal poverty level, you'll get more of a benefit. And I think the maximum benefit is $700.
$750.
$750, sorry. $750, yeah. At 250, you get 300. At 225, you get 400 rebate, and at 200 of the poverty level, you get 550.
Great. Thank you. So, we'll have some more comments, but if you are concerned about escalating property taxes on your fixed income, please come join us on the 2nd and hear more about how this program might be applicable for your particular situation.
The only thing, oh, I don't want to...
Go ahead.
The only thing I would add is that this is for people who pay property taxes and also people who pay rent. There is a component that as rent goes up, you can qualify for a rebate based on the delta in your rent and your income level.
I also noticed that it's for residents who live here in their house.
Yes.
So, if you're not here as a permanent resident, it doesn't apply.
And you have to be here at least five years.
Yeah. Right. Great. Matt?
So, I would just point out, for discussion for the rest of the counselors, take a pass at it. This is a proposal, and it's meant to initiate discussion. It is not a, this is it, or we're not doing this. It is very much modeled after several communities, but it's our first and best take on what we think we should have. And so, I encourage everyone to come up with some ideas as to the numbers. These are, again, our best estimates for what feels right, but it's open for interpretation and discussion, and it's meant to be a jumping-off point.
Great point. Dan?
I just want to add that to what Matt said, one particular point. There's a lot of details in the memo about the different levers and limits that we can adjust if we want to. But one of the other things that we, I don't think we called for specifically in the ordinance is how much money we're going to dedicate to the program. So, there's an estimate, which is very fuzzy because it's just hard to pin down, but it could be, you know, $200,000 for the entire program to fund everybody at the limits. We could set that amount aside, we could set less aside, in which case, the benefits would be prorated. Anything that we set aside and doesn't get spent, I think gets rolled over into the following year. And every year, the council gets to decide how much to set aside that year. So, if it's a particularly good or bad tax year, we could set aside more or less. But that's one of the things we'll have to decide in two weeks.
And you can read that in the ordinance.
Or, actually, we don't need to make that decision in two weeks. I think we have until the budget before we set that money aside, but we adopt the program in two weeks.
Jessica's eyes just got very big. Yes. Yep.
Other questions or comments? All right. Ready to vote. All those in favor of the public, setting the public hearing for this amendment to our property tax collection?
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero. We're on a hot streak. Okay, our next item is item number 81-24. This is related to accepting a municipal reimbursement from the state of Maine for some planning work. Counselor Pilch, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that a municipal reimbursement in the amount of $10,000 from the state of Maine for expenses associated with the town's implementation of LD 2003 be accepted.
Second. It moved and seconded. Generally, I can't imagine any of us saying no to accepting $10,000 from the state, but...
No. So, so when LD...
Before I think about it.
When LD 2003 was adopted, communities really raised concern about having to engage legal and planning assistance to become compliant. So, as part of the adoption, they created a fund that municipalities could apply to. The town went through its LD 2003 compliance process, and at the end of that, our very capable planner had kept track of all the costs and submitted requests for reimbursement. $10,000, I think it's the max that we could have gotten. But the reason this is here, because of course, we want money, but as a good accounting practice, we of course want council to accept those funds before we actually do anything with them.
Questions for the manager? Anybody want to say no? There's your chance. All right. All those in favor of accepting the $10,000 from D E C D for planning work on LD 2003?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Sure, we don't want to reconsider any, okay, I'm sorry. Just hashing this into the ground here. Thank you all. Thank you, Sophie. Sorry to make light of it. It's good work. Our next item is number 82-24, to consider action relative to re-appropriating $75,000 within the fire rescue department. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Absolutely. Be it ordered that previously-approved and unspent capital funds be re-appropriated as follows. $29,000 from SCBA bottles and fill station, $46,000 from engine tanker, $47,170 to protective clothing, $8,990 to FD communications equipment, and $18,840 to PS renovations and furniture.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. We have Chief here to provide us a little bit of context. Anybody have questions? Chief Conley, could you please come up to the podium and just give us very briefly what we're doing here?
So, I'm going to set that up, if that's okay.
Great.
All right. So, Chief and I have been working on this project together. When I came on board, Chief was gracious enough to really open up the doors of the fire station, and we were able to do a very, I would say, a very deep dive into operations and needs. And what we determined was that there were some things that we hadn't, had not appropriately budgeted for and that came to light as we did this deep dive. The big issue here is we have about $47,000 worth of turnout gear that, when inspected, was either due for, no longer met the minimum standard, or was very close to not meeting the minimum standard. So, that $47,000 will bring us up to standard with all turnout gear for all responding personnel, which is critical. We also have $8,990 in here for fire department communications equipment. We have a Minotaur pager system that's really important for first responders to have, that we need to replace. So, those are about between $500 and $600 apiece. So, this would give the same technology that is going to work consistently to our responding staff. To be clear, we are not giving all of this equipment, the, not every per diem worker, if they're not going to do a call, call-in portion of their job, then we would have pagers here for when they come. So, I don't want you to think we're like everybody. The last one, with renovations and furniture, this has to do with going into the fire station and really identifying that we're not meeting some minimum expect, industry expectations for space for 24-hour firefighters, so people who are expected to stay overnight. So, for example, this is paying for mattresses that desperately need to be replaced, it's replacing some furniture. It's also implementing new furniture and in the dayroom, which is a primary place for firefighters to be on-call after regular hours. So, we are spending a little bit more money than you would for your living room, because firehouse furniture tends to take a beating. And so, we do buy specialty furniture. It's not that much more than what you would pay, but a little bit. There are also funds in here to address some short-term public safety, I'm calling it renovations. The police department have some real needs that if we could easily fix, quickly fix, cheaply fix, and not wait for us to plan for the public safety building, I think that makes some sense. We also... We also have some sanitary issues in the kitchen that need to be addressed in the fire kitchen. So that's what the renovation piece is. I don't want people to think I'm trying to get out in front of you on your assessment of the fire of the public safety building. I think that Chief has schooled me well, but he can, you can tell me if I forgot anything.
No, you haven't forgotten anything, it's well said. I mean, it is, part of it is, is the morale of the organization, is to keep them, you know, basically, not, we don't feed them, but I mean, keep them well-fed, protected, and clothed, and stuff, and they will take and do tremendous work for us. We've got some department members that are more, I call them my more aggressive firefighters, and they will go through the gear a lot quicker because they're in that hazard zone. And so I can stretch gear out longer than 10 years, and sometimes I can only carry it for six or seven years. So it's a kind of a moving barometer on needs with that. But we've got a duty to provide protective clothing to them. And just kind of, an average firefighter, between their pants, boots, coat, hood, helmet, we're talking almost $6,000 a person to outfit. So moving forward is, certainly is, looking at this as a replacement plan that will be acceptable for an operating budget, but also to meet the needs of the providers. But just doing some cleaning, some paint in some of the rooms, building grounds, doing an awesome job of stripping the floors, getting those cleaned up and looking really nice and sharp, certainly will change how we feel about being there. And, you know, as far as, like you mentioned, the mattresses and stuff, is think about that, as they're used 365 days a year, and basically, any number of different people are passing through. So, so just, you know, also too, is a piece of it is, is the, you know, health and hygiene, but also too, is the mental aspect of it is, is that this is a tough job. And I will just, you know, segrate and say is that of recent, we've seen some really significant sick and injured people here in town, and in crews that we have. So it's a good chance to come back to the station, have an opportunity to decompress and get ready for the next call and come in. So I take it this is not only the physical well-being, but the mental health well-being of our providers for that. So, so I entertain any questions.
Thank you, Chief. I'll just point out too, that this is a reappropriation, this is not new money, so good work on the staff's part here to find abilities to meet these new equipment needs within the existing budget. Thanks for that. Eric?
Just on that point, to clarify, the money that we're reappropriating for those two line items, the self-contained breathing apparatus, bottles and fill station, and the engine tanker, are those projects that went forward but didn't spend the full appropriation? It's not like we're not doing those things. Okay, thanks.
Matt?
That was my question.
All right. Any other questions? Thanks, Chief, appreciate you being here to explain all of that.
Thank you.
All those in favor of item number eight-two dash two-four?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, great. Our next item is eight-three dash two-four, to consider action to approve, again, a small parklet on Main Street between DeRozers and Sherman's Bookstore. I forget where we are. Councilor Lawrence?
Be it ordered that a parklet on Main Street between DeRozers and Sherman's Bookstore be reapproved for 2024 and subsequent years, so long as the setup remains substantially similar.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I think we're all familiar with this, it's very popular, I've enjoyed it numerous times, it's great to see it draws crowds whether the weather is good or not. Earl's here to talk about what the mechanics are to reestablish that. Earl, you want to give us a brief report on?
Sure. If the council approves this, we're asking that they reapprove it on a yearly basis, and it's Public Works Department sets it up. We have all the stuff from the past year still down at the shop. There's a second component to this, if the council approves this, then I got to go to the state, and I'm going to ask them the same thing for a yearly reappropriation, as long as we don't change the form of it. I don't anticipate any problem from the state, they've been pretty good about it.
I had a question about the parking spot that it sits in, and we make an accommodation for that someplace? We're not taking away handicap parking, or loading zone parking, or anything like that?
It is a loading zone.
It is a loading zone.
We do, no parking. Several years ago, we moved the handicap to the other side of the road.
Got it.
So they wouldn't interfere with that, and it takes up that. But to be honest with you, the delivery truck at DeRozers is normally like 5:00 AM in the morning, so they're out of there before anybody shows up, so it doesn't create a problem.
Right. Any questions for Earl? Eric?
I just had one question about the design of the parklet, and particularly the barriers. One of the questions I've heard around town is whether we could make it look in any way more attractive. I understand the red chevrons on the barriers are for safety, but I know a lot of other towns have gone through this in recent years, as they've created these outdoor spaces, and have been sort of dressing them up in various ways, and I'm wondering where we stand on that.
But this year, due to funding, we had to go with what we have. And I am going to have that discussion with MDOT when we talk to them about that, exactly what is allowed and what's not. When we first started this, the big thing was safety. They were very concerned about somebody coming off the road and hitting something, and it being sturdy enough to stop a vehicle. As we progressed through the transition of COVID, we've seen other ideas come up, and that's something that I've had a couple people talk to me about. There was one idea about painting, you know, letting the public paint stuff on them to dress them up. Yeah, they're not real pretty, but they function, but we've learned since then. So it is, hopefully, going into next year, we would be looking at something quite different than what we see now.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Councilor Chair?
Yes.
You often ask me for opportunities to recognize our wonderful staff, and you are afforded one right here. Earl has, yeah, is he? Earl has really stepped up and is taking over a lot of responsibilities that our outgoing engineer was taking on, and really impressed, and he's holding, he's holding court over Public Works. We've asked a lot more of him, and he's most definitely stepping up.
And that's recognized. Thank you very much, Earl.
It's my people too.
Great, thanks.
I'm going to pay for that tomorrow.
All right, because of a particular context, Councilor Brnoyd, I'm going to ask Councilor Smith to read the next item, which is number eight-four dash two-four, to consider action relative to the use of town property from two organizations. Councilor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the following use of town property requests be approved. One, Bartol Library Lawn at 55 Main Street for Makers on Main events, May 4th, June 1st, July 6th, August 3rd, and September 7th. And two, Town Hall Parking Lot and Front Lawn at 30 Main Street for Freeport Fall Festival, October 4th through October 6th.
Second.
All right, removed and seconded. This is a rather ordinary item, but we do have to allow for specific use of public property through a process, so that everybody knows that everybody has access to that if they come through and request it. Any other questions about these particular events or the users? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, six to zero. That is a successful run of our action items this evening, every single one, six to zero. Thank you very much for very good discussion and support for everything we've brought forward. Our next item is public comment for anyone listening online. Sophie, do we have anybody who wishes to make public comment? So guidelines for public comment online, please introduce yourself. This is public comments on any item that was not on our agenda this evening. If, we'd like to hear from you and your ideas, if the content of the material becomes offensive, we'll end the session. Just to remind folks, we've had some incidents on this in the past, I'm not making any judgments about who might be there this evening, but please move them over and let's hear from folks online.
Sophie's been given permission to talk.
Great.
Michael, you're set to talk?
Oh, can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. My name is Michael Nagres, I live in District Two, and I'm going to just read a short statement for the benefit of anyone who hasn't heard about this issue. I've come here tonight to raise an issue that I recently emailed every town councillor about, and that is the loud gunfire, including often what sounds like an assault weapon, from a backyard shooting range that is audible not just to me and to my neighbors, but also in some areas that tourists to Freeport, Maine might like to visit, including certain businesses and walking trails. This has gone on for a long time. Other residents and I raised this concern with a previous town council and with the police, but the issue was not directly addressed, and the problem continues. I have been told that the town cannot resolve this issue because of Supreme Court precedent and other regulatory restrictions. That is not quite accurate. To my knowledge, the Supreme Court has not conferred the right to take target practice in one's backyard. If anything, the wording of the most pertinent ruling in this situation suggests otherwise. But beyond that, backyard shooting ranges set up after the establishment of neighborhoods, as is the case here, are in violation of Maine's noise statutes. And also, as Lynn Ellis, the Legislative Director of the Maine Gun Safety Coalition, confirmed to me in an email, Maine municipalities have the authority to regulate where and when residents may shoot guns. The Freeport Town Council and the police have the authority to stop this, just as 11 years ago, the town council at that time addressed complaints about the noise from train horns, which is an undeniably loud disturbance, but orders of magnitude quieter than gunfire. So I'm asking again, will the town council and the police, either through the noise ordinance or some other means, please put a stop to the gunfire in our part of town? Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I can assure you that we are addressing the issue, and hopefully you'll hear from us soon about our steps and what we are and are not able to do. I, too, hear this, not the particular target practice that you're referring to, but I hear gun noise in my neighborhood and often ask the same question. So I'm just as curious as you are about what we may or may not be able to do, and I'm looking forward to finding that answer from our staff.
Yeah, I've met twice with the police chief, we're working on kind of a position, a position paper sounds bad, maybe a little white paper that will explain what council has for options. And Michael is correct, the only thing that municipalities can regulate with regard to gun is discharge zones. So we can definitely talk about that.
I also just want to add that Michael did send a video along with his email, and I think regardless of what the noise was being caused by, it was alarming, it seemed quite loud to me, regardless of what it was that was causing it, so.
I agree. Any other members wish to make a public comment online? All right, we'll now move to the other business section of our agenda. We have four items this evening, including a discussion on our capital program. First up on the other business is a one-page set of recommendations that came forward from the Housing Task Force, the Ad hoc Housing Task Force. We've had a couple of conversations at this group in the recent past about where that Housing Task Force is going, and there's been some research collected. I serve as the liaison to that Housing Task Force, and am pleased to bring forward to you a list of recommendations. It is a bold list. Obviously, we're not going to accomplish everything on there, but if you don't ask, you don't ever get anything done. So there's a considerable amount of things I think that we can move forward on as a council and as a town government through our planning board, that are relatively short, low-hanging fruit, so to speak, that we can move forward on. Other things will require some more planning. So this is a chance, we're not taking action on this, but I wanted to get this item moved forward. We have a couple of members of our Housing Task Force here with us, and I think one at least has a couple of comments to make about where the context is from these recommendations. So if it's all right, Chris, maybe you could just come up and make a statement.
Appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I come at this, unlike some of the members on our man-hawk committee have expertise in the planning and zoning world, my involvement has really been 30-year career in the commercial real estate industry. And so when I look at our housing market, I have seen that the demand for housing across sectors has outstripped supply for well over a decade. Councilor Lawrence raised a concern about the missing middle. In the personal reality, I think for a lot of us, I have a daughter who grew up here, went to Freeport High School, she's now a teacher, wanted to live in Freeport, was unable to afford it, is, has been living in Wyndham to find affordable rent. Reason I mention my experience in the commercial real estate world is that a stabilized market in the commercial world is, operates at generally 95% occupancy. So you have 5% vacancy on average, 95% occupied. Again, we have in Southern Maine certainly been operating at 100% occupancy. And the reason I raise this is our primary goal in response to this concern and situation is to increase supply. You see, that is really what we are saying is the primary goal, primary objective. I want to recognize that there, and acknowledge that there are lots of committees, and multiple committees that are working on these issues, not just ours, and we commend them, and as John said, we want to just aggressively push this issue forward. And, you know, as our community designates primary growth areas, and works to align our zoning approval process, the financial incentives like TIFs, and investments in infrastructure, we see that as the primary way for us to advance the downtown vision and create opportunities for that missing middle market. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So again, we're just introducing this, we have a number of folks here from the committee who can answer questions if there are questions that come up. This list is designed to provoke discussion, and so we can have some of that this evening, although we have a considerable amount of material to go through yet this evening on the other business items elsewhere on this agenda. And you're all just seeing this for just, you know, the first time here in the last couple of days as we release the agenda. So we can go a couple of different ways, we can have a little bit of conversation now, certainly answer any specific questions to the degree one of us on the committee has some kind of an answer. to the degree one of us on the committee has some kind of an answer. But I'd also like to ask for your support for the Housing Committee or a subset of that Housing, sorry, Task Force, to work with the manager to come up with a couple of agenda items over the next immediate set of meetings so that we can start working on some of these things for action. So, and they'll obviously be on the agenda a couple of times before we take any votes. But let's open it up for questions or comments that folks have. Matt?
I, I think this is great. I think one of the concerns originally was the scope was far too narrow when, the first time we had this discussion. I love the, the idea of, of going out and collecting data so we can make an actionable plan. I do just want to ask a question. You know, this has implications for a variety of stakeholders within our community, including the RSU. How are we approaching engagement with all those folks? Because, you know, we're also launching into our comprehensive plan, and I just think that this is the ideal time for us to be more aligned rather than less, and especially as we look, and this is just, this is my high-level view. I mean, I have kids in some of the schools, and they're aged out, and we need to start thinking in a, you know, I look at Moore Street School, and we've, we've wrung the life out of that building. And I just think that we need to look at every asset that the town has and how we may use that in the future, and not necessarily what we have to do in the next year or two, but what we have to do in the next five to 10 years, because these are costly, difficult projects. But if they're a puzzle piece to unlock the future that we want for Freeport 20 years from now, I mean, now's the time for us to look at it and work with those other stakeholders. And I, I just throw that out there because I, I think it's really, a holistic approach is, is going to be really valuable in this.
Yeah?
Thanks to the Housing Task Force for doing all this work. I know sometimes meetings can get long and tedious, so I appreciate all the effort that you guys have put in, and there's some really exciting stuff in here. One thing I'm curious about is the last item, create a partnership with the Housing Trust to create finance tools to support for-sale homes. So not sure who to address the question to, but I'm curious what, what that is, what it looks like, what, how it would work.
I think it's open to a lot of different opportunities. A TIF possibly is one way to do it. You can use TIFs in homeownership activity, but I think it's that the part of, well, part of the context, and I'll let Matt respond to that, too, but I think part of the context is many funding sources are going to respond better to an applicant when the town government is a part of the solution. And so it may not necessarily mean a financial partnership. It may just mean a, an application and working within our ordinances and not involve any money at all, but just be a part of coming up with planning and designing and addressing zoning changes to create desirable housing patterns, particularly for, for-sale homes.
When, when you say for-sale, or is it new development of houses that would be for-sale, or is it selling existing homes?
It would be new development of units for sale.
Got it, okay.
There's just not enough supply. And in, in a healthier market, you would see enormous demand like we have right now, leading to the private sector coming forward with product to meet that demand. Even with escalated prices, even with enormous demand, and although interest rates are up, there's still relatively modest compared to where they were 25 years ago, there still is no supply. And that's because the barriers for new development are still so high that even with 6, 8, $900,000 purchasing capacity out there, people can't find a place. So we have to fix that from the bottom up. That's the, that's the purpose.
This is something that we've done, every, every town in America's done. That's why we have no housing. We've zoned it, I think most of it's zoning laws that we have put into place that are the biggest barrier to doing any of this.
Zoning and density.
Yep.
So, I don't know, Matt, do you have anything to add there? If you do, please step to the microphone so we can capture it on the recording.
Yeah, I'll just say, and maybe echo, that there is, that it's kind of an open book opportunity, and, and really putting it on there is maybe allowing the council to put it on an agenda item, explore it, bring it to some attention, or not, right? If, if that's not a priority, if the council or the community feels like that isn't a priority, then that's also good to know where, where we should be focusing energies.
Great, thanks.
I think one other area when you look at is the sewer district and how that, that's going to help us out, too, because the more dense you are, right, the less field you have for waste from every household, so.
But the more dense you are, the more revenue you have to put in place quality, efficient means to treat the sewer, which ultimately is better for everyone.
Right. And I'm just saying, we need to bring them into this discussion.
Yep, sure. Matt?
Just one other question. Does the Task Force have, it's a, it's labeled as a priority list. Are there, is there going to be any actual, like, sort of implementation, a recommended implementation of some of these steps? Because I could see some of them having a real cascading effect, you know, and being important, which one we do first, which one we do second, and so on. Because I'd also worry that if we, if we're not mindful of that and we move forward with something, it could have unintended consequences, like we could open up, we could open up zoning and then all of a sudden be flooded with developers developing high-end real estate that furthers our problem. And that's just, that's an extreme hypothetical, but I'm just saying, I think, you know, it might be good to have a priority list that's actually in sequential order, if that makes sense.
We had a conversation about that, and other members here can respond as well. So we, we talked specifically about not putting a priority list on here because we wanted the council to get a chance to maybe put their fingerprints on what the priority list might be. Working on all of these would, would be considerable effort to do simultaneously, and even, you know, a third or half of them at the same time would be considerable effort. And we're very concerned about staff time, where the council, like, here's a great idea, Sophie, what can you get done? And so we, we're mindful of that. So we didn't specifically put priorities on here, but I think pretty quickly, we'd probably have to design a, a small budget to get some of this done, because not all of it is going to be able to just be absorbed by current town staff. And then the second thing is, we didn't want to put a priority list and start moving, and then suddenly hear, where did this come from, and how did this get decided, and when was this decision made? And so trying to be as inclusive and putting as much daylight on the process as we can, which is why it's on other business and not an action item. We're not voting on this tonight, although I am asking if we could move a subset of these things to action items on near-meeting agendas, specifically in April, if possible.
If I could, it's interesting when you look at the priority list, because some of those priorities are already dovetailing with staff priorities. Brett and Caroline and I worked on a grant application to the state of Maine that would give us funds to help with subdivision site plan review.
Process.
Process, as well as developing educational materials about how to develop in Freeport. So I do think that you're on the right track, because there is a kind of a sequence that has to happen, but a lot of what's in here are, are things that staff has already identified as, as needs. I kind of look forward to working through this with the council. The other thing I would suggest is if we get that grant, we might try to rope the Housing Committee into a little bit more work with us as we begin to work through the tasks on that grant list.
Given, given what I know of the committee members, I think they'd be eager to do that.
I figure if they say yes, it means yes to everything, right?
So for instance, Matt, I think number two would be relatively easy to accomplish with a small amount for a professional marketing analyst to conduct that research, using a lot of what we already have available through our assessor's office and through the information from the Housing Trust, who owns or controls a significant percentage of the multifamily housing in our community already. So those kinds of things are relatively easy to get to, and, and I would encourage those go right to the top because they're relatively easy to get to. All right, any other questions or comments? Thanks very much for the warm reception. Thank you all, members of the committee, for coming. We've got more work to do. Technically have a sunset coming up in the summertime, so we'll have to look at that and make sure we get the Task Force reappointed for a bit of time if we need it. All right, thank you. Our next item on other business is workshop on the five-year capital program. Jessica, and I said program, not budget, because it's not the budget, it's the program.
Sorry? Come on. Do I normally sound louder or different when it's on?
Shouldn't.
Yeah, you know.
But it could be. Somebody else is not turning you off yet.
Hello?
There we go.
There we go. Oh. Good lord.
Just what you asked for.
Right? We'll try that. Try not to move too much. So, yeah, we're jumping right into the five-year capital program. I'm open to suggestions on how council would like to go through this. We can, I know we have some department heads in the audience tonight, so we can kind of jump around a little bit to make sure we hit those relevant articles first. If there's low-hanging fruit that council knows it wants to talk about, we can certainly address those first. Otherwise, I would say maybe we jump right into Article One, and if there are any questions between Chief and I, I assume he's still behind me? Yep. We can try to get those, any questions answered.
I, I think that's the best route. Jessica, thank you, and from previous years, I think that format works well to go through the individual articles. That usually unearths any questions or particular comments, concerns, and then we can get to the summary at the end. That makes good sense. So our first article is Police Department.
So to briefly go through this, I'll maybe either set Chief up or set council up for the questions that they may have. We, you know, we have six items, or five items, actually, that are on the 2025 plan. You have narratives within your packet that should have been provided, explaining what each of the items are for. The, the largest item this year is for some body cameras and car cameras. There would be a replacement to the existing car cameras and new purchase of body cameras, which council has talked about in the past, as well as, we have a communications dispatch upgrade needed. We currently work with the town of Brunswick on our dispatching service, and they have a program update, a software update that they're transitioning to, so this is kind of like our portion of that expense in order to still be able to communicate with Brunswick, as well as one new vehicle. And we have our five-year request for bulletproof vest replacement. That typically is subsidized by grant money, and we will pursue that again to fill in any gaps, but there's usually a small piece that we contribute on a local level. I don't know that it will be to the $25,000 price point, but we, we budget for that in, in case, you know, the, the grant options or opportunities change. And I think I hit most of that, unless you have something to add, Chief?
Just anybody answering the questions that are coming.
Two questions that, only because I get asked this question. One of the bigger items in the budget is the cruiser, and I know that's an essential part of the equipment for every member of the force. How big is our fleet of cruisers that are in use, and roughly what's the replacement pattern frequency?
So presently, we have, was that me?
No.
Okay.
It was probably me, but I only flipped the paper, so I'm not sure.
Didn't know if I should move. Presently, we have 10 vehicles. Two are administrative, one is a detective vehicle, one is a marine harbor master, marine enforcement vehicle, conservation. We have, and then the rest, the remaining, which I believe is five vehicles, are frontline patrol vehicles that are used 24/7, 365 days a year. In that number is also, we've provided for our alternative response caseworker a, a former cruiser, so the third-line cruiser. And the way we generally use cruisers is we get one or two per year allotted. That goes on the front line for patrol. The worst of those, of the cars those replace move to the secondary line, which would be administrative, detective, and then caseworker as well. So we kind of have two tiers: new cars, daily patrol, once they get over 120-some-odd-thousand miles, and that usually, frontline cruisers, that takes us about two to three years to hit the 125,000-mile mark. And at that point, they're more suitable for an administrative role, where there's no emergency response, isn't required as often. And then we transition them to that role for anywhere from three to five years, depending on how the car's holding up, and we look at repair cycles, how much we're spending to repair as opposed to replacing. And then when they hit a certain point, we will trade them in on the next newest car in the fleet, while, while there's still some trade value present for the car.
Thank you, and I know you've heard this from me in particular in previous years, so I'm going to rephrase the question. Can you explain where the technology is on electric police cruisers and the opportunity to consider somewhere in this five-year plan, moving to a battery-electric police cruiser?
Yeah, I, I think, I believe that it's, we're, we're close, and by close, I, I think within the next five years, there'll be something viable for frontline police work. I, I think if we want something sooner than that, for perhaps an administrative vehicle, I think that could be done today, just because the operational frequency of a secondary vehicle is such that in most applications, the vehicle can be plugged in and charged in a normal cycle. Because of the way they're used, the chaotic way they're used, it's very difficult to maintain all the electronic equipment and deal with the weather conditions that we have that are attended in this area for a frontline capacity. It's, it's just too much for the technology right now, even the top-of-the-line multi-motor models. But Falmouth has had good luck with their, they, they're using a few in an administrative role and with detectives. They seem to be doing so, so far so good, from what I've heard back from their chief. I'm always hesitant to put new vehicle purchases on a, with administrative roles, just because I feel like the money is always best spent on the frontline officers who are doing the day-to-day work, so.
Yep, I've been convinced of that in previous years, so I totally agree with you.
Yeah, so, but I, my eye is open. At, at a conference I went to recently, there were several vendors there. I had a chance to talk to them in great detail about this topic, and they're assuring me that the battery technology is increasing, and Elon Musk claims, swears that this is all going to be, come to fruition in the next few years, so.
I work in Brunswick during the day and, and have contacts at Town Hall there, and their foray into this is that their parking enforcement officer drives an electric vehicle, but not their frontline police force.
Yeah. It's something we, we keep an eye on it. We, you know, we're very interested in technology, and especially if it can benefit the town and, you know, the department.
Right, right.
On the note, are there other cars that we own? I know we're
You know, we're very interested in technology, and especially if it can benefit the town and, you know, the department.
On the note, are there other cars that we own? I know we're reimbursing employees for their cars, but are there other cars that we own that would be suited for this?
You would really be looking at Public Works as the other big user of fleet, or the fire chief vehicle. But as far as like either Town Hall staff, there's no other town vehicle. I agree with what Chief said. Your best bet is the secondary line, whether it be from the alternative response officer or an administrative role in that regard. I would probably defer to your Public Works Director or Fire Chief if they had concerns on their level, but there's not a lot of, I mean, the Public Works Director has the truck he uses to go around, you know, that I would assume would have some interest or viability there, as well as, I would assume, the Fire Chief vehicle potentially, maybe the service vehicle.
Chief's vehicle is a hybrid.
Yeah, I think one of the issues you have with command vehicles is that they might sit there, run operational command, need to be on at a fire, at things like that. So I think that's one of the reasons we're trying to wait for technology. I think in Earl's shop, the issue that you, it's the other issue, right? Like, you're going out to address an emergency, I think for day-to-day use. If the only thing they did was get in the car and drive around town and stop, you know, I think you might be able to do some of that. The concern that I think our frontline vehicles, if we were a community that had, like, I came from a community that had like a code vehicle, and we were electric, electric code vehicle, and electric life safety vehicle, that makes sense. I think once the technology improves, so we have a little bit more contingency with it, I don't know if contingency is the right word, but that might work. But then again, I could be wrong.
I think it's easy to say when the technology improves, but without a specific threshold to say when it improves, so that we can get 300 miles or whatever, what are we waiting for it to improve to? You know, if we've got 90 miles of road or whatever, and a car can drive 270 miles on a charge, and you can drive every single road in preport three times over before it needs to be charged, so if there's something, the operating costs would be significantly lower over time. So we should be aggressive about trying to find something, opportunity here.
That's why we went to the code, the electric code car in my previous community. I think the issue here with Earl, as an example, the only one we really could take would be his truck. And it's not like he, I mean, he drives the roads multiple times, maybe not all of them, but back and forth a lot. So I think we just, I hear your point, and I think to think about what those thresholds would be is not a bad thing. Maybe we can dial that in for next year.
Sure. Yep.
I think the big issue is that he's been driving all day, it needs to be plugged in, and now I've got an emergency, and I don't have a car to do that with. That's where the issue comes in, and you can't charge it any faster. So now, he can't go, he's got, it's the immediacy of the issue. It's not, we could drive 900 miles, or we could drive 300 miles, or whatever it is, but, okay, I've done that all day, and now I've got one more emergency, and I can't get there.
Not for emergency frontline, I agree. Okay. I've got a different police-related question while we've got the chief up there, and it's the body car cameras, and just a question on the amount. So that with the audio/video car cameras rolled in to the body car cameras, the projection went up from 180,000 to 250,000, which I assume includes the 30,000, but there's still another significant chunk in there. And I thought we got a pretty good quote last year about how much it would cost. So did the technology increase in cost that much in a year?
I believe the latest quote that we have, there are hundreds of companies that put this technology out. There are two major ones that control about 70% of the US market. So they're the largest conglomerate, so, you know, we kind of, that's where we go first to get a quote. And I believe the latest quote that we have, which is about two weeks old, is 180, $183,000, $186,000, somewhere between 183 and 186,000 for everything.
So that might be able to come down some from 250?
I believe so.
Something else in there?
Yeah, I think that, I believe that was a placeholder.
Okay.
I don't, I, we've been talking about this so long, the technology goes, it fluctuates wildly, usually up, but I think our worry when we started this conversation a few years ago was that if we put a placeholder in or drastically under, you know, it'd be more difficult to explain, but I think we're going to end up significantly under the proposed budget amount.
So I would suggest that we put some contingency in there. It has been my experience that from quote to installation, the dollars change, and there are a lot of adds that come in order for it to work. So I don't know that it has to be that much more, but some.
There's also relativity too with the software costs to save. I would assume like the video, like footage, we may need to consider some expansion of our existing infrastructure to be able to support those. So that's, you know, there's a piece of that in there as well.
Okay, that was Article One.
The good thing is, there's nothing in Article Two for you to review, unless you have questions about something within the five-year plan. There's nothing in Year One of that.
So are we on to Article Two?
Only if you're ready to move on to it.
I think so.
All right.
Chief, thank you. I appreciate the fact that Article Two is zero for this coming capital budget, but I literally choked on my soda yesterday looking at the $1.8 million fire truck coming at us in two years. How on earth can that be that expensive? And that's just my ignorance on checking this stuff, but there's no possibility that what might be aging out or might be out of date in terms of equipment or in need of repair on our existing ladder truck that wouldn't cost much less than $1.8 million?
If I may, I'm sorry.
Add it away.
You said I could.
Absolutely.
So this is a bit of a placeholder. We are putting, leaving that there, given the OSHA ruling, that rulemaking that's going through. We wanted you to see what the potential would be, because if the rule goes through as written, you would have to buy a new ladder truck or no truck, that it wouldn't let you refurbish. Chief and I have talked about refurbishing the current ladder truck. We have also, this hasn't been specked out, there might be alternatives here, but I think at this point, it would make sense for us to evaluate further what's happening with the fire department and the needs of the fire department. We're bringing a deputy on that knows a lot about fire trucks and ladder trucks in particular, which is helpful. The 1.8, I've seen them at that size run anywhere from 1.2, and I don't know that that would work in this community, all the way up to well over $2 million. So a ladder truck is an expensive piece of equipment, and it's an expensive piece of equipment to maintain. We really hope that the new OSHA rule will not be adopted, so that the council would still have the ability to work with equipment to make sure it's safe, not to make sure it's new, which is what OSHA's looking for. Does that make sense?
It does, doesn't...
Make you feel good?
Doesn't make me feel a lot better, but it does make sense.
And this item has been on the five-year plan for a number of years in the same spot. We've been placeholder this for quite a while. And the cost, as Chief would say, has annually gone up to, if we were looking at a pure replacement. But there's a lot of unknowns in the air of where we need to go and what we need, so it's why it's kind of stayed there and giving us the flexibility, but felt it was important to leave it as a placeholder, because at some point, there will be a need to make a move. You're going to need to be at the podium.
Chief, could you go to the podium, just so that people online can hear you?
While he's walking, I'll just say that at Week 16, we've come a long way. Hopefully by Week 75, we'll have better information.
I mean, the incremental changes, I mean, these things, when we started out with the thing here, you know, I took over, it was like 1.2, and it's jumped to 1.8. But the other aspect of it is, is our truck is old, and that stuff. And one of the things is, is as we look down the road in future, is what the industry's telling me on replacement, is basically look at two to three years, build time before you actually take delivery of it. So there is a tremendous backlog going on with building fire apparatus, ladder trucks and stuff. And some of the cost on ladder trucks, you know, as I have to say, I think we could say ours is one of the more simpler ladder trucks, because it's a straight stick with a water pipe and a lot of cabinets to carry equipment. Some of the prices of the other ones that you may see is that they've got aerial buckets, you know, platforms, and just the design, and they put pumps on them to pump water. We don't do that. So basically, you know, trying to keep our stuff as practical and economical as we can, and that's our philosophy on designing a new truck, so.
Thank you.
What exactly is a ladder truck? I mean, what does it do? I mean, obviously in the name, it says it's got ladders on it, but...
Our current ladder truck is 105-foot aerial that will take and spin around 360 degrees. And so part of the design of the 100 is that we can get the reach, not so much the climb, but the reach.
Reach from the street to the house, or whatever.
Yeah, street to the house, driveway, you know, some of the newer houses and some of the more affluent houses is, you know, they almost got three floors in them. And so, you know, getting a hand ladder to that roof is a challenge, independent upon the landscape and so forth. So basically, our, you know, ladder truck has that ability to reach. And basically, our neighboring communities have platform trucks. So actually Brunswick, Cumberland, Yarmouth, Falmouth, all got platform trucks. We're the only one in the area that's a straight stick. And so, you know, we're able to kind of reach to that point. And both of them have got pluses and minuses, but when you go to a platform, you're going into more money.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Just following up on what you were saying in terms of the build time, and what you're saying, Sophie, about the OSHA rules, my concern is if we're waiting until every community is in the same boat in terms of these OSHA rules, how much more that's going to stretch out the build time?
So I think that if we fall into that, a great question, but my experience with NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association, rulemakers, and this process is if we all jump to, we're still going to be in the same, like, they're, this is, they are trying to create this sense of urgency. And then you have to look at, even if OSHA passes the rule, which I hope will put our effort into pushing against that, that it's going to be really hard, because I would say a majority of fire departments would be out of compliance with that rule. So what are they going to do? And at this point, I think we are doing a really good job of taking a systematic approach of evaluating our needs and determining what the next step for this department is. And we've got other communities with functioning ladders, and if worse came to worse, we would survive. It might not be ideal, but we would survive. And I would hate to see us move this up at this point. I would really rather see us continue that systematic evaluation.
Just one thing to add is that, you know, when you talk about refurb, you know, there's a lot of questions on that, but essentially, is early indications on that question is that it would be gone back to Wisconsin for a year, so where it was manufactured. And basically, other dealers won't touch it because they don't want the liability of it, and ladder truck is one of the largest liabilities. So, and so on that note, one other side note is I'll be at the chief's conference next week, and some, and plenty of discussion will go on, and my opportunity to engage with the sales reps and kind of get, you know, pick their brain of this and so forth, and come back and share that with the manager. So we'll keep you abreast of those developments.
Thank you, Chief.
I have two questions, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No worries. What is the lifespan of a ladder truck typically, and then how often would you say we're using it on a call?
So the manager brought up NFPA, National Fire Protection Association. That is a industry consensus standard, so it's kind of like a benchmark to weigh by. Typically, they promote, you know, typical fire engine ladder truck, dependent on its utilization, you know, about a 25-year lifespan. We've passed 25 years with this truck. I think it was purchased back in 96, 97. And it's, you know, and basically every year, it's passed its ladder test, you know, those type of, you know, things and inspection stickers and stuff. But, you know, that life expectancy, so this, you know, what's hidden, just for the sake of it, is ladder trucks going to a repair shop tomorrow just because we've lost a sensor on the outriggers. And basically, that is a, you know, that might be a $10 part and a $200 labor bill. So I'll have better, you know, so it's just the routine maintenance of these things that do go on, so. But I think I answered, did I get your question?
Yeah, out of curiosity too, how often are we using the ladder truck out on calls?
Good question, the number off the top of my head. So essentially, if we get a fire alarm anyways, you know, in town, engine goes first, ladder truck will go second. And I want to say basically, you know, it could roll 25, 30 times a month, you know. But as far as, you know, actual use in fire ground operations, and you look at our structure fires, we're talking about seven or eight.
So the hours on it last year, the total hours on it were 3,967. This year, the number I was given was 4,000, I'm reading upside down here, 4,212. So there's, you know, between, the year before, there was 128 hours put on it. This year, it's a couple hundred hours put on it, just to kind of give you a perspective. The annual mileage last year on it was 966, 30. I'm rounding math right now, because I don't have those numbers in here. This year, it looks like 32, it looks like there was probably just under 2,000 miles put on it.
That includes all the time it went to the shop, right?
Right.
Training.
Any other questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Thanks, Sophie. I think we'll move on to Article Three. Jessica?
Sounds good. For 2025, the request is for training simulation mannequins, and as well as in years two through five of the plan, we have a replacement of a rescue, some cardiac monitors, and a communications placeholder out in 2029. So the mannequins, we are looking to pursue some potential grant funding for that as well, so it may come in a little bit less, but this is, if that grant does not come through, this is what we'd be looking at.
Can I ask you if the... Can I ask you if the, uh, mannequins are compatible with the automatic chest compression device? I mean, do those things get trained, that train staff together on those?
I will let Chief respond to that one.
I remember when we had that demonstration in front of the council, it was fascinating.
So we do train periodically on the, uh, the mechanical CPI device. And I can honestly say that was $60,000 well spent from our donation funds this last year because we've used that device quite frequently in the last year and had some good successes with it. The mannequins, um, part of it is the technology advances and basically is looking at mannequins that we can improve and, and hone our skills as far as cardiac arrest management, respiratory arrest management. And basically you can set scenarios based on a computer program. And basically, you know, for scenario, and they would have the ability to take in, you know, start an IV on the arm and basically push some fluid. And basically you might see a response, positive response, negative response. So we're looking at enhancing our training capacity with technology. And these things, we're on the low end, but I can tell you some of the ones that you'd see, uh, mannequins in these trainings like at UNE and those places, they're talking about 30, $40,000 a mannequin. So, uh, not 30 or 40, but I mean, 300, you know, plenty expensive. But we're looking to draw that in. As Jessica said, it's the, uh, state EMS grant. And if that, we become successful with that, there'll be some opportunity for some adjustments there.
Thank you, Chief. Questions?
Is this something we can share? Do we need a mannequin every day of the year or can we use it for a week? Loan it to Yarmouth for a week, Brunswick for a week?
Yeah, I mean, certainly is the ability to, you know, Yarmouth's got something going on, they want to use it. Yeah, I've got no qualms with that, so. We do, you know, we just had a training a couple weeks ago. Yarmouth sent eight of their people over to our class, so.
All right, any other questions on Article 3? All right. Public Works?
Public Works. They're looking at a couple of vehicle replacements, so Truck 7 and Truck 1, as well as replacing the forklift, which there were some pictures of these items that are up for replacement as part of the presentation. So I don't know if council has any questions on what we're looking at or?
The only question I had, um, for Earl is, I think was last year, maybe it was FY23 that we tried the chassis replacement, uh, as opposed to replacing the whole truck. I'm not sure if that was just last year or FY23. And so I'm, I'm seeing that again here. And I'm assuming that that was a success, that we were able to keep the body parts but change out the chassis?
We don't know that yet.
We don't know that yet.
We're, we're in a process of it. I'm gonna echo what the chief was talking about and both of the chiefs. We're, we're dealing with build time also. I don't even, we ordered the truck at the, um, the council meeting, budget meetings last year. As soon as y'all appropriated it, I ordered it that night. We still do not have that truck and it's not being built yet. So we're waiting.
When did we order it last year?
I ordered it on June, June the 28th?
As part of last year's budget, the.
Yeah, I mean, right at the, the night y'all adopted the, the program, I, I sent it out.
After July 1, he purchased.
Honestly, we have no idea how it's working. We don't even have a damn truck yet.
Well, fiscal year.
Given, me and Darryl has had some conversations about this. If it works how it's intended to work, it's going to be a benefit to the town. Uh, the truck that is up now to be replaced is the first stainless steel body truck that we bought. It's a 2008 Sterling. And that bed is all the pieces on that truck. So we don't really have that opportunity with this, this truck.
Okay.
I talked to Freightliner, which has the bed on the truck that we're waiting on. It was supposed to hit the build block yesterday. So they're telling me 30 days from the day they get it on the assembly line, it'll come here. Then we will take one of our trucks that we're swapping the bed out on, that truck and send it to New Hampshire. And they will change everything and they're telling me that they'll have it for at least two months. So we're still hoping to have that truck by plow season. If it gets to the point where I'm in war, I'm, I'm a little worried about getting it back for plow season, it might not get built this year. Cause I cannot, I can't set two trucks out.
Right.
That, that, that hurts quite a bit.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Earl on Article 4?
Great.
All right, we'll keep moving.
Keep moving. So the next article is solid waste. And we have nothing proposed for FY25. And I don't know if you want to talk about the future years or if we're good to move forward.
My only question was the, cause I'm so familiar with our solid waste facility, go there weekly, as I'm sure many people do. The one ton truck, is that a replacement or is that a new addition to the?
That's, that's a new addition. And honestly, I, I don't know if we'll end up buying it. It's a placeholder.
Okay.
This was, no, it's not a new addition?
No, it is a new addition now. The current.
This is for leachate, right? This, this was part of a plan to haul leachate?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and Earl and I are gonna be identifying. So Earl took responsibility for supervising. The transfer station, um, this morning. And, um, he's now defending their budget, so.
I'm a little off guard.
Yeah. So my, my understanding is that there was an envi- um, an engineering study done around the amount of leachate that was produced. So that's the groundwater or water that comes out of the old, um, landfill and falls into, uh, uh.
Retention pond.
A retention.
Detention pond.
Yep, detention, retention, detention, a pond. And, um, we then have to pull it out because there's so much of it and move it to where it can be disposed of properly, is my understanding. And there is a little bit of discussion around whether the plan to address that by buying a truck and hiring a driver to drive that back and forth is really cost effective or if we should just keep hiring the company to come take care of it as needed. And we'll let Earl really noodle that over the next year.
By Thursday, I bet you.
And come up with a plan.
Great. It's not for this year.
My quick response to that is anything that you can do in-house versus trying to get it outside is we're learning with contractors. I haven't brought this to the council and this is a weird time to even say this. You know, two years ago, we had trouble finding flaggers. And we were getting prices of $35 an hour. So what we did is actually with Jessica's help, uh, we purchased two red light that sat on the side of the road and got timers on them. And I called them, my favorite Public Works employees, because I don't hear anything from them and they do their job. So, huh, never, never. So anything that you can do in-house is going to be the best route to go. Because getting outside contractors right now is, uh, we had a situation here at Town Hall with the front door and it took me 30 days to get somebody to put a key in that front door right there, so.
But the good thing is we will take them next year to evaluate what the best option is, given the situation that we're being faced with for leachate.
All righty, thank you.
Until then, it'll stay as a placeholder.
Any other questions on Article 5?
Just the, um, placeholder that was there on the projection, that heating system that's not being recommended. Was that addressed some other way?
Yes, so when you, if you look at the narrative, uh, we are looking to replace that system as part of the energy efficient upgrades that will be scheduled for 2027.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
All right, I think we're on to Article 6.
Absolutely. This is comprehensive town improvements. So we have a handful of projects within here. My preference for this would just be to see what council has questions on versus try to take you through all the nuances.
Well, we'll get to this at the end, but my, my question is where we are with projecting out five years and where we are with the current balance there. Nowhere near each other, so we'll have that discussion when we get to the summary.
I will say I pared this down significantly.
Yep. And I'll just add that actually this is probably the category of things that are most visible and most recognized by our residents. Often these are the items that are receiving or the cause for most complaints about what we're not doing. So I'm not trying to skimp on it at all. I'm just trying to point out that it gets a lot of attention and therefore, uh, needs a lot of money.
I just have one question. What, what are we not doing for item one, complete street improvement work? What was that $300,000 for?
Yep, um.
We can answer it, answer it at another meeting if they, if that's easier. Put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I, um, so it appears, and I need to do a little bit more digging, that there was just kind of this placeholder for what Complete Streets Committee kind of wanted to do. And, um, as part of my directive, I'm trying to keep up with projects that have already been funded. Because when you look at this plan, most of what you funded, let me just go, let me find it. Last year hasn't been done, hasn't been started. And that actually goes back, the way the policy works is you hold capital appropriations for three years. If you don't complete the project and it's not going to be done at that point, it lapses back in. So there are some capital improvements here that go back to 2021 and, um, that haven't been done. So I think part of the issue is also what we did with what we're asking for is matching grants that have already been received. There is a match in here for, um, what would be our share of a planning partnership initiative grant for the village. And that would go on to Mallett Drive. The wayfinding signs, that was a multi-year plan to pull money together. I think you really need to do your branding work before you buy signs, so I, I get that. Flying Point Road Rehabilitation, um, Earl just got that project since I've been here. And, um, we know we're gonna have to wait probably a year for that. Maybe we might be able to get to it at the end of the fall. Earl's giving me an evil eye right now. The, um, Conker Gully, um, Watershed Restoration, that's part of our MS4 permit that I think we have to do. And the Bow Street Drainage Outfall, that is the, um, storm drain retention pond that we talked about that is creating real havoc for the homeowner that gave us the easement. So we really tried to pare this down. I, I think I want to find a way to capture the wonderful energy from our residents, but they really pull, you guys are really coming up with projects faster than we can build them.
I think the Complete Streets Improvement Work was part of the pathway that's going around town. And it was just really a placeholder for, for that, because we had no idea what it was gonna cost.
My, my goal, and I think I alluded to this when we, um, when we did the initial distribution of the capital plan a couple weeks ago. My goal is that we kind of changed the way we are, um, proposing capital because we seem to have a lot of placeholders. And we have an idea as opposed to here is a project and we know it's gonna, this is what we think it's gonna, a budget cost. Will you appropriate the money so that we can put it out to bid? And I think if we did that, we'd be able to keep up a lot, a lot better.
Sorry, nope. I was just gonna ask, the Mallett Drive project, I mean, I, I see in the narrative that the request is 300,000. Was that 750 a placeholder? I'm just, we're not, not living up to any of the commitment with MDOT.
No, that is our match for what they're estimating. And that is what we see when we see placeholders.
Okay.
The 750 initially was what our exposure would be if there was no, um, matching opportunity. And so, you know, there's kind of two schools of thought of whether you go for your max exposure versus, um, well, and we talked about this last year, whether we go for the max exposure or whether we go for what you're willing to digest. If there's a match, we'll do it. If there isn't, we won't. And so with a year's worth of review, this is, you know, there's more confidence that this is gonna be, we will be able to get a match and that this is the amount that's gonna be on the table for the town. Versus last year, it was really, a lot of, in a lot of cases, you have to have the proof that the money is appropriated or available for the project in order to get the match and not knowing what the timing was at the time. So that's why you see that, that difference there.
Matt?
So, uh, can you clarify the Flying Point Road Rehab? So we appropriated 400,000 this year. We're not gonna touch that, we're not gonna use it? And then phase one of the project will start fiscal '25 and we'll, we'll spend 80,000? And then, um, what happens to the rest of the project?
So, I, I mean, the, the 80,000 that we're adding to it is to be able to do the street in the entirety that it's needing to be done. So the 400,000 that was appropriated last year, basically 80,000 of it will be used upfront for kind of what we're explaining backwards, I guess, after further review of the road. There's just a lot more study and, and, um.
So, yeah, so. Repair. What they originally scoped was more of a reclaim and pave as opposed to a rebuild of a culvert that's collapsed and some video work that needs to be done. And Earl is perfectly comfortable doing basic reclaim, pave, overlay type work. When it comes to rebuilding Road Crown or, um, drainage, uh, we really do like to have plans for that for him to follow. So this is a, um, getting in there and seeing that the road needed, um, more work. So what we'll take, what we will end up spending hopefully in one fiscal year is the 425, 420? 425, 450, 400?
There's a, there's a tiny bit of contingency built into this, but the majority of it is for that planning and, and spec work and then the, the road rebuild. I think that, I think we allowed for 20,000, I think it's 460, because I think we allowed like a 20,000 contingency for what may come up.
So we'll start the work. We'll try to hopefully, um, get the designs, the design work underway and then rebuild the place, the sections, there are a few sections that need to be rebuilt. And then come in and reclaim it and pave it or just pave it? Shim and overlay or reclaim base and overlay?
It will be a regrind, uh, so we'll regrind it. But what, what Miss Sophie is, um, when she so graciously comes to the town of Freeport along with her with a bunch of little stuff that she put on my desk and said, now get this done. So, uh, that, that road happens to be one of them, which in my opinion is our worst road in town. By far, if you drive that road right now, it's, it's rough. So what's happened is there were some under drains that was putting in, uh, sort of like a French drain, preparati pipe. The ends of that got covered. So you're on a downhill side, which is coming down. So that water starts shooting out of those, those holes in that pipe and it starts to roden the shoulder. And some of you drove it last year and noticed that there were some cave ends in it. And some of you drove it last year and noticed that there were some cave-ins in the shoulder, that's what happened. So, we're talking with Mrs. Sophie, what we come up with is that's something, if we start moving pipes around, there needs to be a plan because somebody's going to ask, "Who give you permission to move that pipe?" So, we would like an engineer to come in and give us, "Hey, what, what does this need to be done?" I'm hoping to get that done as quick as I can. I would love to be able to sit here and tell you, "I'm gonna get this road redone by the, by the middle of the year or the end of the year." If we do, we still would only have the base pavement down. We will come back the following year and put the service. So, we're looking at a two-year project, complete.
Okay. Thank you.
Stay right there.
Hang on, I'm not moving.
All right. Any other questions on Article Six, Roads, Town Improvements?
I would just, I would just bring your attention to FY '28. Number three are the Quiet Zone Compliance Improvements at $1 million. So, that I think is gonna be a discussion that we are gonna wanna get, begin to have next year about what that really means and how we might be able to phase those in.
All right, starting with telling us what those are. I'm not even sure I know what those are.
That's the railroad, and you, in Freeport, you made the commitment to put in additional safety features so that the, the train whistle doesn't go all the time, and coming from a community that didn't do that, I thank you with the office right here. But the rules have changed, and we're gonna have to do more.
All right. Article Seven, Jessica?
Yeah, so we'll move right into municipal facilities. So, this is kind of all your, everything we need to kind of keep our current infrastructure and day-to-day operations going. So, we have computer upgrades. The big one in this fiscal year is the replacement of the library roof. We're looking at some flooring upgrades where we'll prioritize, we'll look at townwide flooring and see where the priority is to get some of those items fixed. Public Works is in need of a small vehicle lift, so that's included. And then, we have appropriation requests for the planning out of what to do with the public safety building and how to advance with that. Looking at the five-year, as noted a few articles ago, we have 120,000 placeholder for energy efficiency upgrades to town buildings, where we'll look at all those priorities and kind of get a game plan of how to get some energy efficiencies into our buildings. And, yeah, unless you have questions, it's kind of what we're looking at.
Dan?
Just a question on something that's not there, and I know we talked about it before, apologize if we're repeating, but there's, for the Bartel Building, do we have any money set aside for the work that will probably need to be done there? I thought you mentioned that there's a separate fund available for that.
Yeah, there's a special revenue fund that's established for the Bartel Building, so that's why you don't see it.
So, that's not part of this?
You don't see it within the capital plan. Monies were held aside from rent that's been paid over the years to be able to do some maintenance and upkeep with the building, so we'll use that first.
Is that sufficient, do you think, to do what we need to do?
Depends on all that you want to do. But, yeah, I, I think it's a great starting point, and we'll go from there whether there needs to be additions into the capital plan for it.
I think I asked this last year, computer upgrades, so it looks like over the, from fiscal '24 to '29, you know, it'd be like $250,000. Should we explore leasing where it might be applicable? I don't know what the costs might be, but is it an option that we've at least priced out to see? I'm, I'm not pro one way or the other, I just also worry about, at least with leasing, you phase things out and some of the upkeep and maintenance is lessened, and it just, I don't know what our costs are around that and how we're supporting that, but it's a, I think it's at least worth a look, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to looking. We're currently, I currently try to maintain a five- to seven-year replacement schedule for computers. As we grow in staff and as we grow in technology, there's a lot more units within the town that we're maintaining on that schedule. And this also includes things like your, our firewall upgrades, our servers, our switches, and those will fluctuate the request on a regular basis. Those are eight to 10-years, you know, rollouts, which we just did one, finished up last year, did it over a two-year fiscal year period. So, yeah, certainly not, not opposed to pursuing that or exploring that as an option, but the current build is based off of a five- to seven-year replacement schedule. And then, and we don't, I'll say we don't arbitrarily just replace because it's on a schedule to replace. You know, there's, we had to go through a larger replacement over the last few years because we had to migrate off of Windows 7 that was no longer supported. So, we saw that, that, you know, influx of, or increase in appropriation because we needed to migrate away from, and I think we actually still have a couple of machines that we have left to do that for. So, if that tells you anything, I'm not just saying let's, we gotta do all 25 at once. It was like, no, let's get a rollout of use and where the need is.
No, I, I think that's the responsible way to approach it, for sure. It does make me nervous having really old software because it's vulnerable.
Yes.
Which...
Which we have a great IT company to mitigate and monitor that. They have served us very well in that regard over the nine years that I've been here.
Yeah, but that, I mean, that'll be the headline if something happened. "Oh, they're still running Windows 95." Like, "What's going on there?"
Yeah.
So, I, like I said, I'm not saying one way or the other, but I'd be interested to see because it may be a cost reduction in effort, time, and, and sort of upkeep.
Yep, for sure.
All right. Moving on to cable.
Yes, so there's a slight increase in the, what is typically a consistent amount that gets requested through cable, and this is to address some of the needs and desires of council and staff to enhance the experience of a council meeting in council chambers. So, hopefully when workshops happen, there's, there's better sound quality. So, there's an increase in appropriation to address some of those needs and begin to get those changes done.
Any questions? I think improvements that Tom's made already in this chamber for providing better audio to the audience and better real-time.
Better, like telling me that my microphone's not on. Better real-time, real-time sound for our broadcast channels through social media and on our TV channel. So, I think those are, those are just hints of better things to come, so appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right. There's not much to explain on the next one. Boards and committees, zero.
Yeah, no, nothing on the horizon for them.
For capital requests. Let's see, the last two are TIF funds, Destination TIF and the Concord Gully Brook TIF, which is relatively new. And so, we have a number of items here planned over the next five years for the Destination TIF, although not a whole lot in this coming year.
Yeah, so we're just looking typically out of this fund, the historical standard has been for economic development activity as well as sidewalk maintenance, whatever that may look like within the downtown district. And that continues through the remainder of the TIF, which, which I believe is through 2029. So...
And I'll echo Counselor Fornier, who's not here this evening, about when we do maintenance upgrades and, and surface upgrades on our sidewalks that are not directly on Main Street, we're not replacing those with brick, just to make that sure. My chip in my elbow's almost healed from where I fell on Mechanic Street two months ago.
Can I ask a question about the balance? Because it looks like we're spending money that we don't have, and if we can do that, I'm happy, but I don't know that that's possible. So, can you just talk through how that works?
I can. So, this is kind of like, I'll say like a worst-case scenario. So, each year, we appropriate funds for different purposes out of, out of this TIF fund. And if every project came to its full value and we completed everything to that max level, you would be overspending the TIF funds. Fortunately, I guess if that's how we wanna look at it, the side, some sidewalk replacements don't come to 45,000 each year. So, unlike capital reserves where the money sits there for three years and then would revert back to reserves, this essentially remains in the fund balance of the TIF. So, there's no, no need to return, there's just no expenditure of it. But it's, it's money that's, has been quote-unquote appropriated, so I recognize it as an unobligated amount or...
Obligated?
Or, yeah, sorry. I looked down real quick, the unobligated balance is what is left to be done. But, yeah, so it's, it's been obligated, but it may or may not be fully spent based on our historical levels. I don't, I don't know, and I do this just to show caution for the TIF funds because they can be so elusive in that regard because it's based off of, you know, the tax value and what we bring in for revenue. So, it's, it's a balance, I guess, of what I'm trying to present to you because, yes, they have been obligated. Will they be spent to that 100% level? Most likely not.
So, while it might not be a negative 266,260 dollars at the end of FY '25, it is, I mean, we're, we are obligating more money than we have, and, which is part of the reason that we've had some of the other discussions that we've had around economic development and how to best utilize, capture the TIF dollars. So, I am, I am concerned about that because I don't think you're gonna see a huge value growth in the next couple of years. And '29 is when it's scheduled to, to end, and I, I do have some more information on that, but I, I think, yeah, that's a, that's a concern.
And this doesn't go away either because we're getting 275,000 a year in, and we're planning on spending 302,000.
Yep.
Situation's not gonna get any better.
It's going to get worse if you don't do something with it.
Good.
All right. And last but not least, Concord Gully Brook TIF.
Yeah, so this is, as you were indicating, a new TIF opportunity. So, we're just starting to dabble within the parameters of that and what's, what's available. So, we're beginning with a proposed study for Lower Main Street. And just wanted to get that.
I believe that study is a requirement of our MS4 permit because it's an impaired watershed.
I believe you are correct.
Yep.
What's the 346,000 outstanding projects?
Oh, gosh. That would be an amount carried from the Destination Freeport that should have been removed. Oh, no, no, I apologize, that is not. That is the credit enhancement component.
Oh, okay, got it.
Sorry, I drew a blank. It was so close to the Destination Freeport number that I just read that I was thinking it was, missed formula on my part, but no, it's the credit enhancement component.
And is it the same for the Destination TIF, that the outstanding projects number includes the CEH? Okay.
Okay. Nice tidy one hour, very well done.
Yeah, so the only other thing I have on my radar, other than if you wanted to talk the summary or the reserves, is just there was information after the presentation for the capital plan about, or in conjunction, I guess I should say, so after my ability to put it in to the plan was from Tedford Housing. So, we would just be looking, or I guess I want to put it on your radar of whether or not there's a desire by council to add money, whether it be into the capital plan or use of ARPA funds for Tedford Housing.
One of the action recommendations from the Housing Task Force was to move that request through ARPA, and that's gonna come up on another agenda item here coming up shortly.
Perfect. I just had it in my capital sub, so I wanted to be...
Will not come up, will not appear on the capital budget.
Okay, I will remove that from it then. And that's really all I have unless you have further discussion or questions about the plan as a whole.
So, next steps?
Next steps is we have the public hearing at our April, first meeting in April. And after the public hearing, you have the ability, or on the agenda, there will be a spot for a workshop should you so choose to have some further discussion about these items based on what you hear through the members of the public during their public hearing component. And then, adoption of the plan will occur at the second meeting in April. According to the charter, you get to adopt the plan, the meeting after the public hearing.
Does the adoption of the plan include FY '25 capital budget? That's a subsequent vote, isn't it?
That's a different vote. That will be the appropriation vote that occurs in June through the course of the entire budget, general fund and everything.
Right.
And at that same meeting where you adopt the plan, we'll present the operating budget and move right into that. So, those are the next steps.
In case there's any doubt, Jessica gets awarded recognition from her peers year after year for budget presentation, materials, and command of the material, which I think we just had a nice demonstration of. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We're ready to move on our next item on other business. Number three is process for responding to town council correspondence.
That is Council of the Night. Sure. Sophie and I were sort of musing on this the last couple of times we've met. You know, sometimes as a council, we get emails to all of us and making sure those don't fall through the cracks, kind of wondering if they're, we can discuss a quick process of how to respond and make sure we're accessible and communicating with folks who reach out to us. So, I'm not sure if there has been a process in the past, if that's something that has been a discussion, or if we can kind of quickly workshop something here tonight.
Is that, so we don't all answer with 13 different answers or seven different answers?
Or, the opposite of, nobody answers at all. So, yeah.
So, one option might be that in my past life was my job to make, with one set of councils, it was my job to make an initial, "Thank you for reaching out to the council. Your, your email has been received, councilors will consider it," something to that nature. I stepped in with the noise one because I saw that as kind of operational. I haven't been stepping into the other ones because it, I didn't want to overstep, but I'm happy to do an initial response and try to navigate the things that are more operational out, but I don't want to overstep, and if council wants to make those, they, you know...
And also, you know, the, the one from the noise complaint, right? By the time I responded and sort of shared my feelings with council leadership, Sophie was already on it, so... and sort of shared my feelings with council leadership, Sophie was already on it. So, you know, making sure that we all kind of know what's happening when we get these correspondences.
For my own personal policy is that if somebody emails me directly, I'll respond. But if it's a council email, obviously, I won't copy everybody else on the response. Sometimes I respond, sometimes I don't. If we were to have a policy, it might be nice to say, there's a thank you for emailing us. We'll look into it, kind of a thing. But I should probably come from the chair, if we're going to have something like that. But I don't know that it's always appropriate to send something, or if a form letter would even be a useful response.
But then a form letter becomes, oh, yeah, they're just.
Exactly. Right, right. It's almost worse to say, yeah, yeah, thanks for your input. So it doesn't answer your question.
No.
I might add, this could be something, if we had a communications position filled, this could be something that that communications person could be addressing. And there would be some triaging or dispatching of where the information or the requests go, so that they have a specific follow-up. But as yet, we don't have that position filled.
I think that that's something that your manager could do, if you were comfortable with that, simply because I'm going to have a good sense of what is, what needs to go before council for discussion, what can be filtered to a committee, and what belongs with staff. But again, I really don't, or can give an answer, if you've already just addressed it, that the town council went through this, you might check out this video.
Are there any issues with you copying all of us on the response?
No, the only issue you're going to get into is if people start doing back and forth, not if I'm doing back and forth with somebody.
And we're just watching.
And you're watching. You're perfectly fine to do that. And I would love that. That way, everybody stays on top. As I told somebody, I think it was Counselor Smith earlier today, with eight sets of eyes on something, well, nine, considering Caroline still gets them. We're a lot more apt to catch issues or balls that might drop. So I'm happy to kind of step in. But again, most recently, that was not something my former council wanted, and I did not want to step on toes.
So I think that's a great way to do it. But if we catch something, I don't think we want to respond to all, right?
Everybody okay with the manager making those initial responses, so that members of the public know they're being heard and the information is being dispatched to the department that needs to be? I am too. So, great. Have at it.
Thank you.
All right. Our last item is, on the other business, is cannabis licensing and dispensary discussion. I'm assuming this is from, we've heard from one of the proprietors at previous meetings about a request to change the language that we just changed.
Yes. And you are going to see our town planner pop up on the screen. I wish I could make her bigger, though. How do I do that, Tom?
And we're a speaker instead of gallery.
When she starts speaking.
All right.
Yeah, she'll stop.
I guess that means you want to hear from me.
There you are.
So you heard a request, I think it first came up when you guys started considering cannabis licensing and land use amendments to the zoning ordinance, that there is a new use that a member of the public referred to as medical dispensary cultivation. And they wanted the council to include that. They've since reached out a few times, and they are wondering if this is something the town's interested in. I think they came to you and spoke under public comment. You know, at this point in time, it's not something we've been given council directive to look at. As you know, we spent a long time, the council sent cannabis land use to the planning board in 2021. They looked at it over the entire year in 2022. At that point in time, when we were talking about it, you know, the director from the council was specific. But we had also heard from the two operators that were in town, that they were possibly looking to switch to adult use, and that was an option that they wanted. So that's what we brought forward. So now that these are in place, sometime during that process, the state did change the rules, so that there was a dispensary use. The information's a little unclear. We need to get some clarity. We allow caregivers and we allow adult use. And as you might remember, caregivers are limited in the quantity of plants they can grow, either the quantity of flowering plants or the square footage. And they can serve their patients. Sorry, distractions in the background. Now, we're being asked to consider this new dispensary use, because it wouldn't have a limitation on square footage or the number of plants. I am trying to get some clarity from the State Office of Cannabis Policy on the dispensary use, and whether or not it strictly could pertain to cultivation, or if there's a retail component. Because the council and community here have been very clear that they don't want a retail component. With caregivers, we do have to allow a point of sale. So in some of these cases, patients can go to sites and purchase the cannabis, but you're not going to see open flags, you're not going to see a retail storefront, which again, is something the council wanted to avoid. The second part of this request is, now that we're into licensing, the council decided to set a cap. And so the cap was for four cannabis manufacturing licenses and four cannabis cultivation licenses. The two facilities we have in town alone would exceed that four. So part two, I think, of what we're looking for feedback tonight, is, is the council opening, open to revisiting the cap on licensing at this point in time? Or do they want to stick with a solid four? And giving guidance to the applicant on the land use amendment process, as you know, would have to go through planning board and council, although the applicant is more than willing to bring something forward on their own and have their attorney create it. We do know that it would still take up, you know, municipal resources such as staff time and legal review. So we're hoping to get some feedback from the council for both the benefit of the applicant and clarity on how that council wants to move forward with a few items.
Thank you for that explanation, Caroline. Questions or comments? Dan?
The only question I had about what you were saying is that you mentioned with the two cultivation facilities in town, we already exceed the four license allocations that we have. How does that work?
Yeah, so when we crafted the licensing ordinance, again, we had been working, you know, along with a couple of grow facilities. Our understanding was that there was one license, we assumed there was one caregiver license at each facility. At the licensing hearing, it was noted that one of the facilities has four different caregivers that are licensed by the state. They each supposedly operate kind of independently, but there's four of them in one building. Thereby, they would need four. We do have a second operation in town that I know has already applied for one. So in order for the two current businesses to keep doing what they're doing, my understanding is that you guys would really need to up that to five. I would say, kind of what you did last time, knowing that there's still a little bit level of unknown, and the state's looking at changing rules. If you were going to increase it, I would maybe consider going to six. If you were going to increase the cap, we would need to bring forward an amendment to you to amend the language of the ordinance. Because again, we set it up for the priority licensing. And then if anything was left, we set it up to go to a lottery.
But I thought that caregivers were exempt, because they were medical and they preexisted our stuff, and that we were only licensing the cultivation for adult use.
So, they would not come through site plan review, but they would still need to get a license through the licensing ordinance. If you're a caregiver growing in your own home, as a home occupation, then you are exempt. In the case of the two facilities we have in Freeport, neither of them are growing in their home. They are both growing in commercial or mixed-use zoning districts outside of their home. And they would need a license under the current ordinance.
Eric.
So just following up on that, Caroline, the, I think what we heard at the hearing was that if we were to go down the line of this dispensary licensing, that it would eliminate the need for those three or four caretakers in the one facility to be all on their own license. They could all be operating under the one license for the one facility. At least, that was sort of my understanding. But I guess we're caught in this bind right now between where it's unclear how to move forward with allowing that type of license, and what we have now is insufficient.
So, my understanding is you're correct. I reached out to the Office of Cannabis Policy today and was not able to get clarification. But my understanding is now the four caregivers really need to operate as four separate kind of businesses in that facility. And they do all have size limitations. My understanding is that the dispensary wouldn't have the same size limitations, so it would eliminate the 500 square feet or the 30 mature plants. And you're correct, Eric, that they wouldn't need to operate separately. They could operate as one. We would need more clarification. But I think, you know, looking, knowing that we're talking about applicant-driven item, and we do need some more clarification, is this something that the council's really even willing to consider going down the road and amending the land use ordinance? And then we have the question of the licensing.
So there's the question. I think for Caroline's benefit, we, she's asking for an indication if we'd consider this. This is not a vote, this is not a commitment, this is just an indication. Do we have some comments on whether or not this is something we want to direct Caroline to pursue? Jeff?
Yeah, I think we do. The whole point was to help the, these people to be able to grow. And it sounds like in the middle of our deliberations, the state changed the rules on us. And we didn't, we didn't, well, we picked it up, but we, to get it through, we want to at least get the initial phase through. So I think we should look into it.
I would say, I guess, it seems to me like we need to pick a direction to go in. Either we pursue the dispensary option that would take the limit back to what we thought it was going to be, or we don't do that, and we just up the caregiver, or up the licensing limit to allow them to continue to do what they're doing. But I don't see the need to do both, I guess. And that's why I'm asking the question of which seems like the path of least resistance, or to get what they want more quickly without an exorbitant amount of staff time.
Clearly, at least from one of the entrepreneurs, that amending and allowing medical dispensary, if I have that terminology right, is the preferred path from the business owner's perspective. And that's the path that would require us making that direction back to the planning board, to go through public hearing and amend the ordinance through its process, which is the two-year process that we just finished.
But wouldn't it be a little quicker, because we already have something in place? We're just amending it. And it's, it's medical. It's not for, you know, it's a medical dispensary. It's not a record, an adult-use dispensary.
Yeah.
Can I clarify for you guys, though? They're really talking about two different things. I think their intent is to come in right now and apply for licensing under the current ordinance. Because if nothing else, they do want to keep doing what they're doing. But ultimately, the preference, and they sent a letter earlier today, is to be able to switch to the dispensary use. And they are willing to make application and put the legwork in to have the planning board look at it. But I think, you know, if you don't do the licensing, then we have a limit, and they may need to, somebody, whether it's this or another one, depending how the licensing works, might need to scale back their current operations and not operate as they are today. And then the dispensary would kind of be a second thing. So I feel like we do, I get the point of wanting to look at them as one, but they really are two different things that would help them in two different ways.
So they're not mutually exclusive. We could consider the license increase and then let the ordinance language go through its normal process after that?
Yeah, because at this point, they wouldn't even get to the planning board until May. You know, and the planning board are going to have two meetings, and then the council will have to have two meetings, you know?
Yep.
So a conservative estimate for zoning would be.
That's more clear to me now. So maybe the first question that we can give feedback to Caroline about consideration is, would we consider an amendment to the license limit in the current ordinance to go from four to something higher, preferably not just five, but something a little bit more latitude? And we can wait for a recommendation from Caroline when we have that action item in front of us.
Yes, I think so. I mean, the whole point of this was to help these guys be able to do what they're doing. So we almost did it.
I agree. And I think, I agree. I think certainly it is a, never mind, I'm talking about the next question. Yes, I agree with this. Yeah.
I'd say maybe, or probably even. I just want to make sure that we, when we get to changing the other part, we don't wind up with, let's say, six or eight full-scale dispensaries. That wasn't the intent.
Right. And then we can change that in the ordinance when you.
Right.
As a combined. Man, are you on this? With the license increase, license number increase?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
As I am. So I think, Caroline, that's your indication, that the amendment to just increase the license count, which is something we can do with a quick amendment and relatively fast in terms of timeline. I think you just heard an endorsement to go ahead and spend time on that. And that the second part of it, which is to amend language in the land use ordinance about describing this new category, can start.
Yes, thank you. That gives us feedback so the applicant knows what direction to move in.
Okay. Any more questions, Caroline? So you got what you need?
Nope, I think I got what you need. We'll be back to you soon with some amendment language to the newly adopted licensing ordinance.
Okay.
It's a process, right?
All right. I think that was the entire agenda.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. They moved in seconded. All those in favor? All right, six to zero, our last vote of the evening, six to zero. Thank you all. 10 after 9. Way to go.